I call the Board of Education's 13th, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, would you please rise and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates, present.
Bolton, present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Present.
Jesus.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Thank you. I want to start this morning by informing everyone of the format for today's meeting. We will have an agenda item for hearing of the public, and we're moving the superintendent's presentation to our first agenda item this morning. Once the superintendent has finished her presentation, we will have our agenda for hearing of the public. We invite you to participate in this conversation and to express your opinion. Members of the public who wish to be heard during the board meeting must raise their hand to speak during the first 15 minutes after the start of the meeting. Individuals who raise their hands after the first 15 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during this meeting. So I would encourage you to raise your hand now so that you make the 15-minute limit. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting June 24, 2020, special meeting June 26, 2020, special meeting June 29, 2020, special public meeting June 29, 2020.
So, so moved.
Second? So move, I have heard, Mr. Messer?
Second.
Mr. Ross, second. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, I need to go back because I missed one. May we just go back and add to the list of to be approved is the special meeting July 1, 2020. So let me get that redo the motion. I need a motion.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Bolton, as Chair of Finance Committee, please present the June 24 Audit Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you very much. It's an important meeting, as all of them are, and they were pleased to begin the meeting with a very extensive presentation by the superintendent regarding the report and return back to school and many of the considerations that the district is facing. After that presentation, there was a lot of discussion too about network security and assessment results, as well as a number of things from our internal auditor and looking at the fiscal year 19 financial audit report, reviewing that. The administration, one action is the administration will provide an update at the August 26, 2020 Audit Committee meeting outlining the action plan for each item from the management letter regarding our audit. We also then heard the preview of the 2021 internal audit plan by our internal auditor. And after that, at the end, there was a request by the committee members to have the audit committee member, actually Carol Mitchell Lawrence, requested Mr. McDowell provide regular updates to the committee regarding the progress made towards implementing the recommendations from the benefits internal audit report. Again, members were very, very interested in where the district was, also interested too in the financial implications of our return to school and the other demands as well. I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion to approve the report.
So moved.
There, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Minutes are approved as presented. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce this morning's presentation.
Yes, thank you. So today we are here to give an update to the opening plan for the upcoming school year in August of 20, the 24th, 2020, and I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. So this morning's update will primarily focus on health and safety, and you may recall, I'm on the third slide now, that health and safety is one of the core messages that we're focused on for the upcoming school year. Next slide, thank you. So this morning, we're going to talk about two big areas, health and safety, and primarily the majority of the time, the presentation will be really centered around the processes and protocols that are going to be put in place for the upcoming school year to ensure the safety of our young people. We also will do a brief update on the academic plan for the district. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to express to the board and the community the plan as it relates to in-person learning and as well as remote learning. We will be doing an in-depth conversation and presentation with the board soon around equity and addressing racial disparities, but today we want to primarily focus on health and safety. So as we think about health and safety, what we want, all of our employees, all of our students, and all of our parents to be able to know, at CPS, here's what you can expect in terms of health and safety within our schools, not only for our young people, but also for the adults who serve them. So we have 15 project teams in place here at Central Office to open the upcoming school year, from communications to food service to transportation, that are all really centered around how we're going to address the processes related to a safe environment considering COVID-19. Each school will also have two project teams in place. One project team will be focused on academics in terms of the in-person learning as well as the remote learning, and then one team will have a focus on safety and security and health of our buildings. And at this point in time, I'll turn the presentation over to Sarah Trimble Oliver, and she will begin our conversation around safety precautions.
Good morning. During our planning process for how we can open schools in the safest manner possible, we have been using the CDC considerations for schools as our guidance. You have seen this list before, but today we're going to go into detail into each of these 31 items so that we can paint a better picture of what school will look like when we return, because we know that school will not look the same. Our process, go ahead, next slide, Jeremy. Our process was to take those 31 guidelines and determine how we will implement those at CPS. Now, you may remember that those guidelines are not mandatory, but at CPS, we have taken a very strict adoption of those, because we believe that is the best and safest guidance that leads to the safest opening possible. So we are documenting our implementation in the district's safety plan for school reopening, which is pictured here, and it will certainly be an evolving document. So to kick us off and to cover items 1 through 5, we have Cynthia Igbalnia, our Environmental Health and Safety Manager, also lovingly referred to as Safety Cindy.
Good morning, everyone. So as part of our safety district plan, we're focusing on the behaviors that are key to reducing the spread of COVID-19 through our school community. Some of these are enhanced and familiar practices. Some of them are new, such as wearing of masks. I would want to just point out a few key points on each of these, just briefly. So stay at home when appropriate. We will communicate our policies and encourage staff and students to stay home when they are sick. We will educate our staff and our families about when they should stay home relative to COVID-19-related situations or directions, and when they can return to work or school. This is how we keep each other safe now. This is key. Daily health screenings are also key. They're a key component for identifying when someone should stay home because they have symptoms or exposures. So students and parents will be instructed on conducting daily self-assessments, health screens at home, to check for COVID symptoms and to take their temperatures before they come to school, before they get on the bus, every day. Additionally, at each of the schools, we will be taking temperature of the students as they enter into our building. That's another key component. Hand hygiene, not a new topic, right? However, we have greatly enhanced these protocols around these key behaviors. Hand washing is a key behavior. So we have placed hand sanitizers, as you may have seen, in our main hallways, in our entryways, and in our classrooms, and we expect and will be instructing staff and students as they enter the building and as they enter their classrooms to use the hand sanitizers. Really important, hand hygiene. We will also educate and reinforce proper hand washing techniques and reinforce the use of hand sanitizer when hand washing is not feasible. Additionally, hand washing will be scheduled into part of that daily routine of our students. Cloth face coverings, this is new. As required, we will require staff and students to wear cloth face coverings when in the buildings and when riding buses, including metro. To make wearing of cloth face coverings effective, we will also inform and instruct on the proper use, handling, care, how to take on, how to take off, and care instructions such as storage and washing. It's important to note that we will expect staff to provide their own mask when they come and are working in the buildings, and we ask parents to provide masks for their children. DPS will provide masks for those individuals who are unable to provide their own, but again, we're asking parents to supply them for their children. Fourth, we recognize that there's a substantial increase in the use of these supplies, soap and hand sanitizers and towels, and that's due to our safety protocols. To support this need, Facilities has prepared for a constant and adequate supply to meet our increased needs. Fifth and final on this page is signs, educational materials, and messaging. This will be created and used across the district to promote proactive procedures and messaging for staff, students, and families. The district will be providing these materials consistently, same signage, floor signage, and student educational materials to every school, so that messaging will be consistent district-wide. The materials will be incorporated into the school's positive behavior intervention support plans, and we will update these messages as guidance from CDC, state, and local health officials are updated and changed. Next slide, thanks. So just to show you a few of our behaviors in action. So the first picture on the left is one of our first meetings after our buildings closed. And as you can see, these are essential staff that are meeting, and as you can see, they easily adopted universally the need to wear a mask and social distancing. The top-right picture shows a hand sanitizer wall mounted in a hallway, and the final-right picture is just an example of constant messaging. This happens to be, again, constant messaging throughout our district and is our daily health assessment that's posted actually at each front door. So I do want to turn it over to Robin from Facilities.
Good morning.
I'd like to share with you that we have dedicated teams working in the buildings right now preparing the spaces. Our building engineers and custodial staff are in the midst of summer cleaning, and in addition to this, they're receiving additional training on new procedures, new forms and checklist, new equipment, and new processes focusing on pandemic. Our procedures and cleaning details have been modified to focus on high-touch-point areas. We've purchased new equipment, including custodial carts for every custodian, so they have their tools, their sanitizer, their disinfectant, and all their supplies right at their fingertips. We purchased electrostatic sprayers. You can see in the photo on the far right that one of our building engineers is getting training on one of the electrostatic 360 machines. All classrooms and other areas in the buildings will have disinfectant spray and paper towels available at all times. Buses will be disinfected between routes, and vendors will be reporting their COVID procedures to us. Classroom shared supplies will be discouraged. We're going to encourage that they utilize individual supplies when possible. I'm going to talk a little bit about ventilation. I'd like to share with you the screenshot that's on the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. This is a shot of our building automation system showing the supply side of one of the air handler ducts, ducts going to an air handler at Woodward High School. And I'm sharing this because we have building automation systems for every building in the district. These BOS allow us to closely monitor the heating and cooling systems in all of our buildings to ensure that they're working properly. Through the building automation system, we have the ability to increase fresh air delivery quickly, and we'll schedule a full ventilation mode during peak occupancy time. We also have the ability to zone off and isolate sections of the building, allowing us to do a flush out if needed. All schools have supplies of filters, and these will be changed regularly, and we'll be logging those changes on a checklist at every air handler. All of our drinking fountains will be cleaned and sanitized regularly, and we are encouraging staff and students to bring water bottles. Many of our schools have water bottle filling stations, and we expect that they'll be used. We've provided school leaders with floor plans and suggested generic layouts for classroom spaces, illustrating six-foot distancing in those rooms. We've done a mock-up at South Avondale and one at CogDale that actually we'll be working on later today, so that we can walk through those spaces and sort of identify circulation routes. It also enables us to do some time studies with our custodial staff. Distancing on buses is required with the goal of one student per seat. We will be allowing siblings to sit together. Our goal users have been really busy lately, fabricating and installing Plexiglas barriers. You can see, yeah, the first photo on the slide is actually our glazing shops, so you can see production of some of those barriers in process right there. To date, we've installed 210 barriers in our building. That production will continue throughout the school year so that we have adequate supply as school opens and leadership sees the need to add more. Large groups of students in cafeterias and other gathering spaces will not be allowed. There will be staggered use of playgrounds and gyms will allow for small group use. That system lunch will be served in the classrooms instead of in the cafeteria. Take-home meals will be available for students on remote learning days. Turn it over to Sarah Trimble Oliver to talk about maintaining healthy operations.
So the third section of our safety plan is maintaining healthy operations, and you can see it includes items 14 through 26. This section is actually being led by different members of our team, so this is going to be a group effort on this particular section here. So starting with item number 14, protections for staff and children at higher risk, we will be offering students who are at higher risk of severe illness the opportunity for remote learning through Cincinnati Digital Academy, which Tiana will be reviewing later. For staff, we have developed paid and unpaid leave policies that will be available for staff who are ill or staff who are, have a condition that makes them part of the vulnerable population, and Paul will be discussing these. We will have to temporarily pause any parent or community volunteers in the building, and that is to ensure the safety of our staff and our kids in the building. Every additional person that's coming into the building is additional risk. We will also have to pause any nonessential visitors and activities involving external groups. We would encourage parents only to visit the school for emergency purposes or enrollment. We will also have to pause in-person field trips this year, and we will pursue virtual field trips or virtual activities. We will be pursuing the use of virtual parent-teacher conferences when possible. The next item is identifying small groups and keeping them together. We mentioned previously that the school leadership is now working on their individual school safety plans over the next three to four weeks, and this item is a huge consideration for them and their class schedules and their master schedule. We are asking that as much as possible, schools keep the same groups of students together and avoid mixing groups when at all possible, especially for the younger children. When possible, the teachers will move classrooms instead of the students, and there will be no large school assemblies. All right, the next item is staggered scheduling. This item in our safety plan is all about social distancing. How do we make sure we're doing the social distancing at every touch point during the school day? Two weeks ago, when the blended learning model was approved for reopening schools, that was an example of staggered scheduling. So we will have Group A and Group B, just as a reminder, attending school on different days in order to allow the six-foot social distancing. We have developed some guidelines on how we are creating these groups, A and Group B. Group A will be students who have a last name starting with A through K. That's Group A. Group B will be students who have a last name of L through Z. Siblings who live at the same address will be grouped together in the same group, coinciding with the oldest sibling's last name, even if they attend different schools. Now, in order to assign 36,000 students to these groups, match up their siblings, balance the classrooms, and balance the bus routes, all in the small timeframe that we have, we do not believe that we can accept individual requests to switch groups at this time. We're also planning for staggering the arrival window so that students aren't all entering the building at the same time. This will result in a wider arrival time window than we've had in the past, and this again, just to make sure that everyone can get into the building in a safe manner. We will also be staggering dismissal time. The schools are also asked to stagger their bell schedule changes, locker use and restroom use, so that students aren't congregating in the hallway or in other areas in large groups. We will provide consistent signage and floor stickers that schools can apply to their staggered schedule plans. Now, Robin has already mentioned there are going to be some significant changes with bus transportation this year. Buses do represent a challenge to our safety precautions, because it's a limited amount of space, and you have students in different classrooms mixing together on buses, which from the science, we know these are higher-risk factors. So for these reasons, we are encouraging parents to seek alternate methods of transportation when they can. Nevertheless, bus service will proceed this year, and these will be the new procedures. Masks will be required for riding the bus. We will have extra available masks, especially at the beginning of the year when everyone is still learning the new procedures. Students will have assigned seats on yellow buses, and it will be loaded from the back of the bus to the front as it drives along the route. Our goal is to have one student per seat with siblings allowed to sit together, and again, the unloading of the bus at arrival time will be staggered to avoid large crowds. The bus will be disinfected daily per the recommended guidelines, and we are planning to provide bus monitors for the yellow buses to help the students learn all of these new I'm going to skip number 19. Susan is going to cover this later regarding the school nurses. Item 20 is participation and community response efforts. The superintendent is involved in many coalitions and committees, as well as other members of the leadership team. We are involved with the city, the city health department, Hamilton County Superintendent Coalition, the Ohio eight urban districts, the Ohio Governor's Office, and at the national level, the Council of Great City Schools, and we are sharing information and working collaboratively with all of these committees to help build our safety plan. Okay, and finally for me, signs and symptoms. You may have experienced this, maybe when at a doctor's visit or a dentist's visit where somebody is scanning for your, scanning your temperature or asking you questions from a questionnaire before you're allowed to enter. The guidance for schools varies on this topic. It's not clear whether temperature screenings are effective in this setting, however, until more specific research and guidance comes out, we are going to implement temperature screenings at our buildings for every child and adult. We have a small task force that is designing this process, and that includes Children's Hospital. Individuals with a fever or showing other symptoms will be isolated. And again, as Safety Cindy said, we still also strongly encourage every staff member and every parent to vigilantly check for symptoms before even leaving your home in the morning. This is how we keep each other safe. When we do become aware of suspected or confirmed cases, we will have a CPS COVID-19 dashboard, and Jeremy Gollihue and Eric Keen are leading the development of this dashboard, and this will allow us to monitor in real time the count of confirmed cases by school, for staff and for students, the count of confirmed cases by date for staff and students, tracking any school or classroom short-term closures that may be necessary, and we will have an address-matching lookup function so that we can identify students who may live in the same household as a confirmed case. All right, and now we will turn it over to Krista Boyle.
Thank you, Sarah. So just a couple of quick slides on communication. This is the same timeline that we shared a few weeks ago. Some of the work is complete, such as launching the Wi-Fi pilot program, as well as an initial survey to parents about their intent to return children to school, and we'll get to that in a moment. And we'll get to that in a moment. All of the July work has been started. This includes updating contact information, which is an ongoing effort, employee communications regarding fall, and detailed safety and school planning, as well as technology distribution. In addition, we've added a back-to-school section on the CPS website. This will serve as a one-stop shop for information. We've also relaunched the weekly superintendent updates, which will have a safety and academic focus. And details will be mailed to homes by the end of July, such as confirmed AB groupings, as well as safety and logistics, which will be mailed this week. We're also preparing for return to school through case notification communication for suspected and confirmed cases, as well as classroom-grade school closures. Next slide, please. So we completed a survey last week through email and robocall. We received responses from about a third of families. And I'm going to quickly go through those. So the first question, do you plan to have your children return to CPS schools in the fall? Similar responses between email and robocall. 73% email, 67% robocall said yes. Same with unsure. And it's interesting to note, we were able to get a little bit more detail from the survey, the email survey than robocall. And of the 24% unsure for email, 60% of that was due to health and safety concerns. So second question, are you interested in enrolling your children in Cincinnati Digital Academy? Higher yes for robocall, 22% versus 11% for email. Final question, this is something we've been talking about quite a bit. Are you concerned about having adequate childcare for your children? Similar responses, 38% yes for email, 44% yes for robocall. We will be fielding a survey again in August closer to school to get an idea of have these responses stayed consistent or evolved. And with that, I will turn it over to Paul McDowell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So there are some things that we do know related to what has been prescribed to us, related to our staff. And we know that we need to take a very aggressive approach at developing a substitute type of recruiting effort for our staff members. We've had revised leave policies and excused absences due to COVID. And on this slide, share with you those topics. One, if an employee is sick with COVID and the type of coverage that they're allowed to use. If an employee is caring for a person with COVID as well, and this is obviously very new. If an employee is caring for a child home from school or daycare. Then lastly, we have the vulnerable population as well. So adopting our current leave policies to what we have now, because we know we're going to be faced with different challenges as we move into this upcoming school year for our staff. And what we do know is that staff is going to have to take time off, for whatever reason that it may be. So we've developed a strategy related to how we can continue to cultivate the relationship we have with our current substitute staff, and then also build onto that. So with that said, what we wanted to do was, one, we wanted to create more community-based presence in our community, letting people know that we are looking for additional substitute employees. We have a population of substitute teachers, substitute principals, substitute clerical, and substitute paraprofessionals that we use on a regular basis within our district. We also wanted to continue to cultivate the relationships with those individuals. We've reached out to them in June, asking their willingness to work, and then also just building that population of employees. Because at the end of the day, we know that people will need to take time off. And as Sarah mentioned earlier, if we have an employee that is showing any of the signs or symptoms, for the safety of our students and our staff, it's important that those individuals stay home. With that, I will turn it over to Shawna Murphy.
Good morning, everybody. Next slide, please. In reference to Krista Silver that she talked about, some concern about childcare needs, right? And so we are taking a look at childcare needs both for our staff and for our families. So with respect to our staff, I'm very excited to have the opportunity to work with Vera Brooks in Early Childhood Education. So we have talked about the following bullet points, addressing childcare needs for our faculty for young people, grades K to six. We talked about possible locations in a variety of areas across our city, northeast, southwest, central. And we are looking at space at Vonn, Mozart, Ezra Charles, Ami, Silvutin, Woodford, Schroeder, and Rithro. So there's a variety of areas in our city within our school district. We're looking at implementing CDC CPS safety guidelines and protocols. We are blessed to already have an administrator and a custodial staff onsite at each of those locations. We will have staggered times to accommodate the staff with a variety of school work times. Civil service employees will be placed in each of the classrooms. And we're looking particularly for civil service with CDA certification. Breakfast and lunch will be provided. There will be technology onsite. There will be physical outdoor play areas at a reasonable cost to staff.
Sorry, Ms. Murphy. Ben texted me and said he was having trouble hearing with a mask. If you're comfortable taking it off.
Sorry, we forgot the protocol.
You're good, you're good.
All right, sorry, Mr. Mundy. The other piece I want to share with you is for our families with concerns about childcare needs. Starting this Thursday, Mr. Daniel Betts with Cincinnati Recreation Commission and I are going to convene a group of partners who are interested in looking at that for our families. Some commitment already that we have from agencies are through the YMCA, Art Works, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Cincinnati Museum Center. So we'll be coming up with more information to support our families with their childcare needs. In addition to childcare, our community learning center motto has been a staple in our schools for many years now. So this past spring and throughout the summer, the following agencies have come together, the lead agency executive directors from activities beyond the classroom, Cincinnati Youth Collaborative, the Community Learning Center Institute, Families Forward, Gaskins, Grad Cincinnati, Images of Excellence, Man and Family Center, and the YMCA. About, next slide, please. How we can have co-located partners to serve our children's academic, social, emotional well-being. And so they have adopted and agreed to follow Cincinnati Public School guidelines in order to do this work. They will maintain concepts around our AB schedule as Sarah pointed out. We are talking only about co-located partners in buildings. So our resource coordinators and full-time after-school coordinators. And this will be delivered through remote possibilities without having visitors in and out of our buildings. They understand that, and I've bought into that 100%. We will have the lead agencies stay in the schools for which they were assigned, and they will not go across school buildings. And they will follow the CDC and the CPS guidelines for health and safety standards. Next slide, please. For remote learning days, there could possibly be opportunities for students through our lead agencies. They will work with the leadership of the schools to review exactly which services will be provided. And there will be exceptions depending on the various types of buildings for the school year. We also had a conversation about food insecurities. Our lead agencies are used to providing snacks after school and even dinners. They will work with the school personnel to do that as safely as possible. Next slide, please. And up next, Support, Coping, and Resilience by Susan Banti.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have spent some time this morning really talking about the physical safety of our employees and of our children. But we also recognize that the emotional safety that each of us feel is incredibly important as well. After that, we will spend a little bit of time talking about our preparations for when someone gets sick. Next slide, please. So for our students, we know that resiliency can be supported. Studies from UC Berkeley strongly suggest that if we weave together a tapestry of support, our students will fare better. So beginning in August, on August 20th, all of our staff will have professional development and trauma-based training. We recognize that not all of our students have experienced trauma during this time, but all lives have been impacted by this pandemic. We also are providing developmentally appropriate student handbooks, for littles, middles, and bigs, that will go to our students with the idea that I can make a difference by choosing actions such as mask-wearing, social distancing, and hand hygiene. That puts the control back with the child in what sometimes feels like a world that may be out of control. Our school social workers are at the ready to provide small group support. And as Cynthia talked about earlier, she and Carrie Bunger are working in conjunction to provide signage and also teaching techniques and support for our students. Our partners at Mind Peace have come up to the table, ready to help support, and are expanding our very successful Mind Peace rooms, places in our buildings where students can go to self-regulate and take a break before behaviors escalate. And finally, Mind Peace, along with Joining Forces and CPS, have created a series of videos aimed specifically for our teenagers and also parents of our littler ones and our staff members that can be watched in times that work for them. So they can be viewed at home at any time during the day on a virtual platform. Next slide, please. We also know for our staff that support, coping, and resilience is incredibly important. That in these times where one day sometimes does not look like the next, it's very difficult to predict. So that can lead to burnout. It also can impact student outcomes. It can impact our relationships with one another. And these stressors contribute to all of that. Next slide, please. So how do we help? How do we step into the space to promote support and resiliency? Starting in August, self-care workshops are open to all of our staff members and to our teachers, sponsored by Beach Acres. We had a pilot last spring that sold out and was very, very well-received. Our teacher leaders are an incredible group of people who are working, as we speak, to create a toolbox of resources to share with their teams during team meetings. We also are providing trauma-informed practice training for our directors and managers during our August role-alike meetings. And we'll continue to provide our leadership bulletin. Over the, well, when we first moved to COVID stay-at-home orders, we started a supporting-one-another email. And that was throughout April, May, and June. It was incredibly well-received, and that will relaunch again in August. And finally, a resource guide will be provided for all employees with research-based strategies. Next slide, please. We know that it is critically important to prepare. And so the final bullets from CDC are as follows. Next slide, please. So every school will have a school nurse, working in conjunction with our Cincinnati Health Department. Those nurses will be hired and serve schools beginning in August. We also recognize that our population who we serve may not necessarily speak English. So there will be hotline support for our school nurses in multiple languages. Our nurses are also going to take a look at making sure that we have parent consent forms for all of our students. We are working with Cincinnati Health Department and the Children's Hospital to develop or to have testing in place in case children present symptoms. As Cynthia talked about in number one, the very first CDC recommendation, is that when folks have symptoms, whether they be students or staff members, the best thing to do is to stay home. However, we recognize that perhaps some people may come to work and develop symptoms onsite. This flow chart indicates what will happen when that occurs. Next slide, please. We know that they will be moved to a separate area. All schools and even our ed center have been asked to provide places where people can go, students or staff. Those areas will be regularly cleaned. And we also are really asking our parents to think through several ways that children could get home in case they become ill. These are times that require for contingency plan A, B, and C. Sarah talked about this already, so you had a glimpse at the dashboard and with recognition that we will be tracking those types of cases. Finally, we know that if and when we need to remove to remote learning instruction, that a plan is in place. And now Sarah's going to spend some time speaking with us about the systems and processes that guide our work.
So that actually does conclude the presentation of the district's safety plan for reopening schools. I did want to point out that this plan was informed through the partnership with Children's Hospital. We held a design session two weeks ago, working through some of these processes. And as a follow-up to that, we have some additional small task force to continue working through some of these brand-new things that we are doing for the first time in the schools. So I believe at this time, we are now turning it over to Dan Hoing for the policy implications.
Thank you. Good morning. On Friday afternoon, the Policy Committee met, and we started to discuss some of the policies that the administration is recommending changing for the 2020-21 school year. We put a draft mask policy that we presented to the Policy Committee. It's a broad mandate for all students and staff to wear masks at all times at their, in CPS buildings and riding on CPS-provided transportation. The Policy Committee is taking that policy under advisement now. But again, it is a broad policy, very limited exceptions for functional reasons, such as when a student or staff member is eating or drinking, receiving medical or dental services. As you know, we have health centers and dental services onsite. But limited exceptions. We'll make reasonable efforts to accommodate younger students, students that have sensory sensitivity, students with disabilities. We'll make accommodations where we can, including with face shields. But the board recognizes also that individuals who are unable to wear a mask may present a direct threat to other students. In addition to the masking policy, we also made some recommendations for some policies that will require adjustment for this school year. The administration has been maintaining a list of policies as we start, as we think and plan for this school year. So for example, for the 2021 school year, we're recommending that staff and student travel be limited only within 100-mile radius. We're recommending the temporary closure of our Alternative to Expulsion, Alternative to Suspension program. You know that program? That's a program that students, if they are suspended or expelled for disciplinary reasons, they're assigned to that school temporarily. The problem in a year like this is... The problem in a year like this is there's just a tremendous number of students coming in and out of that building for short periods of time. That model, we don't think, works very well for trying to prevent the spread of this disease or this condition. We're recommending significant limits on the use of district facilities, limited only really to essential functions. And then also our school visitors' policy, we anticipate, will be significantly restricted for this school year. And now Tiana Ahmad for a briefing on academics.
Good morning. So excited to give an update on our academics and the focus on accelerated learning. We have adopted this quote in the Curriculum Department from the Standards Institute, that all children, regardless of circumstances, receive high-quality, grade-level curriculum, instructions, and technologies. We will have a four-step approach, first, beginning with building relationships, having high expectation, creating a warm environment when the students return, and also having very targeted focus on social, emotional learning. The second step is really to diagnose learning. We will give every student an academic pre-assessment to determine where they are, what are the gaps, and have an asset-based mind approach. We're going to start with their strengths and build upon that and scaffold our learning up. From there, I'm excited to give you the update that we have a partnership with UC, University of Cincinnati. And we're putting all of our lessons, assessments, parent communication on Schoology. They are helping us to upload this information for a resource for teachers, students, and parents. We will have from kindergarten through 12th grade, all of our virtual lessons in math, reading, science, and social studies. There will be templates, maps, and pacing guides. And our last, we have adopted a quality improvement. And part of that is monitoring and giving feedback and making decisions. And we're going to make this instructional decisions, whether we should adapt the process, adjust, or abandon. We will continue to have student experience surveys. We've administered these surveys during summer learning, and the students gave us excellent feedback. We will continue that approach. We will continue with plus deltas in our classroom to get feedback from our students so we can customize and tailor, design the learning there. Next slide, please. Also want to give an update on Cincinnati Digital Academy. We have updated the curriculum. So excited about this. The curriculum is now aligned to all of the lessons that we are doing in our neighborhood and our schools. So all of the students will have access, again, to what they are learning in our schools, whether it's written wisdom, my perspective, the use of Schoology, and we're going to combine it with Edgenuity. That's the current program there that monitors how often the kids are logged on. We will continue with credit recovery for any of our high school students who need to gain credit. And then I thought it was important to share the enrichment opportunities that we are putting in place. There will be Advanced Placement and College Credit Plus at the Cincinnati Digital Academy. And then we also have separate questions around extracurricular. Participation in sports and club is maintained at Cincinnati Digital Academy at the neighborhood schools. So you can enroll and also participate in those extracurricular and sports activity. Next, I'll hand it over to Superintendent Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you, team. Next slide, please. So you may be wondering what's next. So we have a pretty aggressive timeline in place with process owners for each component of the timeline. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we do have 15 project teams in place that are being led by the members of the PLT. And so getting to August the 24th, which is the day that school begins, is our D-Day, the day that we will launch everything and make sure that we're ready. Our project plans, as well as our timeline, includes communication, distribution of technology, professional development, and all the safety protocols and procedures in place, as well as the academic concerns related to the upcoming school year. And so that concludes our presentation for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Open up, board members, for questions and comments before we get to move on. Ms. Fowers?
First of all, I'd like to thank Superintendent and the leadership team for that robust presentation. But I had just one question, I mean, maybe a couple of questions for Robin. I think when you talked about the buses and then the ventilation and the schools and things of that sort, do we have air purifiers in our schools? Or maybe in the health centers of our schools?
We do not use air purifiers, no. Our ventilation systems don't allow for that. That's more of a residential-type application. So our heating and cooling goes through a series of coils and filters before it gets to the air handle.
Okay, and a second question is also for you regarding the sanitation of the buses in between routes. There are some schools that don't ride a, I guess it's called, what is the route specifically for the school? The extra, I guess it's the extra. But there are some schools, like SCPA, where they don't have extras. How will those buses be sanitized? Because they'll be riding regular buses as everybody else.
I would make this mention that the vendor is going to provide to us their procedures and tell us how they're going to make that happen.
Hey, Mr. Jones.
The expert.
Hi, how's everybody doing? I didn't catch the full question.
The question is about the metro buses that are not extra buses. It's probably time to sanitize them before they go onto a regular route after they drop off or pick up our kids. But there are buses that our students ride that are not extras.
That's correct. So metro policy on sterilizing the buses is for all vehicles, both extra service and the regular service route. And they do a deep cleaning every day with the Eco-Electric Static Solution. And they're also looking at other methods to adapt in the next couple of months.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Messer and then Mr. Murawski.
Thank you to the administration for that update. And I think the details in there, as a parent and as somebody who cares deeply about our staff and the 38,000-ish kids that we serve, it feels really good that it's a highly risk-management-focused approach. You can never take the risk out, but I love the details in there. Two things that I am concerned about, just globally, you know, we're hearing cases reach the highest point, setting records each day. This morning's was even scarier. So wondering if the administration could speak to how we will measure and monitor and what would it look like, you know, if there was, you know, what would it cause for us to close? And then at what point would it cause us to open? Like, how is that being managed? And then another follow-up question is getting into some of the specifics. You know, we talked about kind of general practices. If you could speak to pre-K and how that will be addressed in the fall as well.
So in determining whether to open or not, the administration would bring to the board for their consideration data that's related to the city, as well as Hamilton County. Hamilton County is currently, according to the governor's guidelines, a county that is on, under watch, and it is a red county. So there are four different levels. The first level is yellow. Level two is orange. Level three is red, which is what Hamilton County is. And then level four is purple. And so there are different guidelines for each level. Level four actually calls for basically a quarantine or a shutdown, which was very similar to what we experienced in March. And so we will bring to the board on a regular basis where we are as we approach the upcoming school year. The commissioner, Health Commissioner for the city, she sends me daily updates in terms of the number of cases within the city and also within the county. And so we'll bring that information to the board for your consideration to decide whether we actually open our doors face-to-face or go straight into remote learning. If we actually do open in terms of face-to-face, then we will, we will look at the dashboard that Sarah and Jeremy are developing along with Children's Hospital. Really, on a case-by-case, a classroom-by-classroom, school-by-school basis, determine whether or not we need to close classrooms or close entire schools. So we will use an extremely conservative approach in terms of closure. So if we have a case, then we'll close for at least 14 days, but all along the way, we will seek the board's guidance, but looking at our own data, as well as the Health Department, as well as the guidelines provided by the governor. And in terms of pre-K, so I wanted to, and we'll mention pre-K again in the superintendent's report, but there is the opportunity for us to be able to open our pre-K classrooms at five days a week because of the limited number of kids that are allowed in the pre-K classrooms. In addition to the large sizes of those classrooms, we believe that we can safely bring our pre-K students back five days a week and maintain social distancing of six feet. So that would be a, it would be divergent to what the board initially approved. And so I'll bring it forward in the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murawski.
Thank you, President Jones, and thanks for that very thorough presentation. I know it makes me feel more at ease after this weekend's news. To Mr. Messer's point, walking into this meeting, my brain is kind of leaning toward not opening to be fully transparent, but the plan looks sound. And I know you're going to talk about preschool later, Superintendent. I have a number of questions. I'm going to ask them all. I think they're quick questions, though. I'm going to piggyback off the preschool real quick. Like the other programs where people can opt in to the digital and keep their spot, a preschool family may not necess, I mean, digital for preschool, I don't think, is a real thing. So what would that look like if they don't feel safe sending their kid to school? Do they get to keep their spot for a year?
So we can provide work packets for little preschoolers, but I'm going to ask our deputy superintendent, who might have more specifics around what the instruction may look like for parents who are deciding not to send their preschoolers back.
Okay.
Well, while Ms. Ahmad is coming up, one of our board members is virtual. Mr. Lindy, I don't want to ignore you if you have a comment, so please just make sure, shake, shake me up a little bit so I can see your hand, please. Thank you.
Our early childhood department has been working with our LTTs, our Learning Tech team, in professional development with our teachers. So lessons, just as K through 12, will be available. Actually, they were leaders in our video lessons on YouTube, so we are continuing that work so families will have access to remote learning opportunities.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That's awesome.
Can I follow up since Ms. Ahmad is up there? And I'm, just since you were up there. What is, there are different rules, I'm guessing, around homeschooling? If kids not, not virtual, not...
Yes.
So different rules around homeschool. So if a parent is opting to homeschool, will they have the option, will their seat be in place if, when they come back next year?
Yes. And homeschooling is a lot different. So you're taking on the responsibility to educate your child at home, and there is an application process.
Got you. Thank you.
Good question. And another one, so the ventilation, Ms. Brandon gave an awesome presentation up there, I thought, and seeing the floor plan of Woodward and how that can all be controlled, it was really encouraging. I'm curious if we have identified buildings that may actually need investment because the ventilation systems are so poor, and if we're going to need to do that. Our buildings are great, but some are pretty old. Wonder, they're all created equal.
I can share with you that all of our buildings have up-to-date HVAC equipment, including the building automation system, with the exception of Carthage and North Fairmont, which we are doing right now. So those will be complete before, before school starts. So then the other two properties that we just acquired, Mozart and Lighthouse, those systems, Mozart has a heat pump system. It's not on our building automation system, but it's fairly new. LEAP, we plan to upgrade those mechanicals next summer.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Only a few more, I guess, I promise. I think they're quick answers, just for my own edification and certainly for the public as well and my colleagues. The extra duties for teachers, and this could even just be a nod, the extra duties for teachers of the cleaning, supervising lunch in classrooms, et cetera, is that all going to be explicitly stated in some sort of document? I know it's probably not contractual, I don't know, but explicitly stated with the teachers?
Yes. So we have produced a new, from the District Central Office, handbook for kids in terms of expectations so parents are aware. And then we also have a new employee handbook, which will include all of the safety precautions that are related to COVID-19, so it becomes part of your daily routine.
That's great. Thank you. Only a couple more, and then I promise. I assume the safety document that, that Ms. Trimmer Oliver alluded to in the presentation will be online after this meeting?
Yes. We've already started working with our principals on the template, so we'll make sure that that's uploaded, as well as the PowerPoint presentation.
Cool. I really am anxious to get that PowerPoint presentation out. That was really, really impressive. I don't care. I think that's it? Oh, no, no, it's not. Last, and Mr. Messer, I wanted to circle back to Mr. Messer again, because he brought up the point about the litmus test for shutting down or going forward. I know so the state has released the yellow-through-purple continuum, and I know Forest Hills adopted, like via a resolution or something, that they would, the four things they would do based on it, purple being go all virtual, red where we are go blended, which is what we're doing. And it sounds like that's already up for consideration. I'm not suggesting we do that, because I just would like to throw this out there. I'm not convinced that the state government is going to give us direction to close down it for a purple. I'm just not. And so I just would, it sounds like, just based on comments, that we would probably all be aligned with that. And I just throw it out there, though, that I know at least one district codified it and said, this is what we will do. Because again, we have, we have been obsessed with opening bars and not our schools and childcare facilities, and I do not have faith that the state government is going to give us direction. So I just throw that out there as maybe for consideration.
Absolutely. So on Friday, I was on a call with the governor along with CFT President Julie Sellers, and he was asked very specifically about guidance. And he pointed to the continuum in terms of yellow to purple, but did not give any specifics around Ohio making any decisions regarding local school districts. So we do have a series of data that we're going to look at, and I'll present this as well again in the superintendent's report. We'll be looking at the Cincinnati Health Department data, and I'll start forwarding that to the board on a daily basis. Then the CPS COVID-19 dashboard. We will also be looking at student and staff absence rates, as well as student enrollment. And we will work very hard to get the information about spread in districts from Hamilton, within Hamilton County. And so the reason I have a caveat there is that they're not required to release the information to us about their own specific school data, but we will work to see how we can get, have access to that information. We will use a lot more other than, the final one that we have on our list is any type of guidance from the governor's office.
Ms. Fulton?
No, thank you.
First, to say, great report. Thank you so much. It's very reassuring to the public and to the board, and we know the kind of work that's gone into it. I also want to say that thanks to taxpayers over a number of years, we do have relatively healthy buildings at great expense, $1.2 billion. What puts us in a different place in a lot of the urban districts. And very frankly, the possibility of having preschool five days a week at the, at a safe distance like that also is a credit to the taxpayers and the preschool promise. So folks have been with us for decades, and, and it's giving us many more options than other people and other districts would have. I have a, just a, a couple of quick, well, more than a couple, of course, but first, I think deputy mentioned we would be doing credit recovery. Would we also necessarily be doing kind of credit accelerate? Will there be college credit plus or those sorts of, of programs? I don't know if the superintendent wants to answer that, but credit recovery plus credit accelerate would be available to the students that stay with us?
Yes. So advanced placement, as well as college credit plus, we specifically called out credit recovery in terms of a systemic district approach to credit recovery.
Excellent.
Beyond even a digital. But acceleration is available as well.
Wonderful. Also, will our more than 20 school-based health centers be able to remain open in our facilities?
Twenty-four, and we have five or six that are open right now and have been open all summer for the public to be able to use and access.
That's great.
We are also engaged right now with COVID-19 testing that is being sponsored by the Health Department and closing the health gap, along with the National Guard. They are actually at the Ed Center right now. They start at nine o'clock. From nine until one o'clock, it is a drive-through testing where anyone, it doesn't matter whether you're associated with CPS or not, can come and have a COVID test. They will email the results. If you're negative, if you're positive, then they will give you a phone call. We also have other locations at our schools throughout the rest of this month and August that will be offering free testing from nine until one o'clock, and that information will be emailed out, robo-called out, and on our website.
When we were forced to shut down earlier in the emergency, we, in some cases, we were really ready to do it, in other cases, it was a complete shock and trauma to everybody. Could you speak a little bit more, maybe you're going to do that in the report, but how we have been improving and where we are on Wi-Fi devices, getting staff prepared for this particular decade that we're in, because I know that was confusing and what have you. So if you could talk about where we're in such a better place, hopefully, after a lot of work, than we were in the spring.
Yes. And while I'm doing an intro, I'm going to invite our deputy superintendent and one of our assistant superintendents, Susan Bunty, to come forward to fill in some of the gaps. So when we closed in March, all of our kids did not have devices at home, the devices were in the buildings. And so we did, in starting April, we started deploying devices, first of all, to our seniors who needed to be able to gain credits to graduate. So we listed them in a priority order. By September 4th, we will distribute devices for all of our kids, grades two through 12, and that device deployment started July 6th. And how many devices have we given out to date roughly? About 1,600 have been distributed at this point. Each school has a day in which they can go, parents who are assigned to that school can go and pick up a device. So in the event that we have to go completely remote, we plan to have the devices out by September the 4th. I will continue to communicate that out to parents. In terms of Wi-Fi, we have an initiative connecting our students and our families to Wi-Fi. We have five pilot schools that will begin in August in terms of having Wi-Fi through a partnership with Cincinnati Bell, as well as a lot of companies have come together, as well as the NAACP, NAACP, to raise money to support Wi-Fi so that it's absolutely free to those kids who need it. We knew, we found out last spring that approximately 11,000 of our households did not have Wi-Fi needed access, and so we'll continue to push out Wi-Fi as we're able to raise more money. But quite a bit of money has been raised to have Wi-Fi for at least five of our schools so far, and more partners are coming on board. In terms of the remote learning, just to kind of recap, when we closed, we prepared packets for kids who did not have access to technology or Wi-Fi. GE Aviation paid for those packets to be copied by Federal Express, and then they were given out at our food hubs. We will have workbooks for our kids this year for those who don't have access to Wi-Fi right away. That would be aligned to our curriculum that we're using in school. We also were able to give out our packets through Staples last school year, and not sure that we'll have that service, because we're actually going to use the workbooks that are associated with the curriculum. I'm going to ask our deputy superintendent also to talk about what other things have been put in place since last spring, and then I'm going to ask our assistant superintendent to talk about the social and emotional aspect of the work, school social workers, as well as all the videos that have been developed by our team to help our families stay connected in this time of isolation.
Also during the summer, the month of July, families could put, pick up a workbook from K through eight to help with the summer, summer slides, so that is in process right now. As far as PD for our teachers, we started this in fourth quarter with all of the new learning around remote and blended learning. We have continued and enhanced our PD with the distinguished educator certification, where teachers are learning how to engage students remotely. There has been a structural change between curriculum and ITT. There are four members of that department who has now joined the curriculum department. Technology is such an important resource to our teachers. So there are four members coming over from LTT, from ITM to curriculum. They have been assigned to quadrants in our district, and part of their responsibility is ensuring that they're assigned schools that the teachers are comfortable with using the technology and integrating it with the content. Also during that week of, when teachers return, there will be two days of PD specifically around the academics. It will be hands-on, real-time learning, where teachers will be setting up their Schoology page, their syllabus, information to send home to parents. We heard loud and clear from our families that the experience was different, not only from school to school, but from classroom to classroom. So we are really putting a standard practice in place so that system in the fall is high, rigorous, and ongoing communication and clear across the board at all of our classrooms at Cincinnati Public Schools.
Before I speak about social emotional, I would just like to address, just really quickly, our students who, for many reasons, are unable to work on a computer during those remote days. So many of our students with autism and multiple disabilities. We have teacher teams creating tubs, if you will, of hands-on activities that they will be able to use during those days. In terms of social emotional learning, we are blessed to be part of a consortium called Joining Forces, which is a group comprised of Cincinnati Children's, Legal Aid, JFS, among others in our areas, including Children's Home. And this summer, we were able to put together several video supports for our parents to help our students meet their social and emotional needs. So there were very, there are several different topics. Parents could watch those and then do some of the activities with their children. Our social workers are chomping at the bit to get back with their students and are poised, as I mentioned before, to really start groups with our kids. I think that they, in addition to doing tier-two small group support, have also jumped into that tier-three space to support individual learners, as well as providing lessons for all students in our schools.
Ms. Bates had her hand up, and then Mr. Messer, and Mr. Lindy.
Okay, I have a few questions, and one's continuing with concerns about children with special needs. I haven't heard that there's been any relaxing of the regulations associated with IDEA and ADA. Is that correct? And do we have a plan for compliance with that?
Yes. So you are exactly right. IDEA, there, it has been no change. So throughout March, April, and May, kudos to our intervention specialists, our building administrators, and others who held both ETR meetings and IEP meetings consistently throughout that time. We've learned a lot about Google Meet and how to conduct those conferences. In terms of meeting IEP needs, we are charged to do that, and our teams have become incredibly creative to get that work done. But you are exactly right, those, those all still hold.
Another concern I have are, is about the students who are enrolled in our advanced placement classes, because it seems like the way we have staggered our, our, our school days isn't going to allow for equity in delivering that service. And also, the second part of my question is, do we have the cumulative results of the AP testing that was taken this spring to see if there was a slide because of the way they were administered or how, how that worked?
We do not have the AP results yet, and I think it's important to say that three days of blended learning, remote learning, is learning. We are putting together information, we expect that the learning should continue when the students are home. So what we're doing is trying to put the supports and resources in place so when students are home, that the learning is continuing. We have learned a lot since this fourth quarter and have been working diligently to fill those gaps, whether it's the use of our Schoology and getting standardized lessons there, training our teachers. And then we're also going to be putting on orientation workshops for our families in August. So how can you support your child at home? We also continue to update our website.
And another concern I have is about the digital academy, because there seems to be a significant number of families that are choosing the digital academy. And there was mentioned that there would be alignment with the curriculum, enhanced alignment to our curriculum. But our schools all have different curricula. And we have...
So in the last three years, we have worked with, with SAC, who have district-adopted curriculum. So social studies was two years ago, ELA was last year, and this year is math. So the state tells us clearly what we should teach, but not how we should teach. So I think we were ahead of the game three, four years ago of putting some standard practices, resources, and materials together. We still have a lot of work to do in supporting our teachers in the use of the district-adopted material, but you were correct, in the past, they were very disjointed. But these last three years, we have really made an effort to have a standard curriculum across the district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Messer, and then Mr. Lindy.
Yeah, this is in follow-up to the conversation. You know, what I love about these plans is there's always solution, there's a backup, because in a district as diverse as ours and as big as ours, you've got to be fast and flexible to meet the needs of the specific family, so I applaud that. One thing that I share my, I'm sure my board members can attest to in the literally hundreds, if not thousands, of inputs and things, lately, there were several around the homeschooling component, because they were hesitant due to the screen time. And it might not have been a developmental disability or anything like that, but it was just a concern on screen time, et cetera. So could the procedures you talked about for students who might have sensory issues or whatever, that, that we have kind of created kind of a workaround to provide them an equal opportunity that gives them the education without a screen, could they leverage that same type of approach if that was a choice their family made?
Yes. So last spring, when we closed our schools, we gave parents a sample schedule to be able to not only plan out their day with their students, make sure that they got their work completed, but also to limit the amount of screen time. And so the, the plan is, on the remote days, there will be a combination of screen time in terms of using technology, then also the workbooks and projects, and hands-on art drawings and things like that, that the kids can do as well. So we'll provide, again, a sample schedule for parents to help the kids be able to follow during the day. I will say that, you know, with this presentation, it is, it's just that. It's a presentation. It's planning. And so the, the real key will be our implementation and our ability to, on a day-by-day, minute-by-minute basis, be able to monitor the implementation of that plan and to be able to have people raise the red flag to say, this wasn't done, or this wasn't done, all along the way, so that we can ensure the safety of our young people. And so we'll be working to make sure that we have, through HR, an ability for people to voice their concerns, if you're a, a staff member, about specific things that aren't being followed, that we laid out in terms of this is what you can expect at CPS. And we'll also have that same mechanism for parents to be able to report to, just like we have our button that you can push, so that we can make sure that we have that quality control in place at all times. So again, I, I won't try to fool anyone with saying that everything 100% is worked out. We have a solid plan, and now it's about implementing and then making those adjustments all along the way to ensure the safety of everyone.
Mr. Lindy?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Hear me okay?
Is that sound coming? Great.
A little help.
A little loud. Okay, well, I will do my best to speak softly. Now I should speak louder. Okay. Thank you all for, I think, allowing me to be remote today. My son, Aaron, is home from preschool with a fever, and so my wife and I are splitting up our time with him today, and I appreciate creating a way for me to be here. I also have never been on a screen that is this large in my entire life, and so it's a new experience for me, and I appreciate you working through it with me. I, I wanted to share, first of all, just some genuine positive feedback to the superintendent and her team on this plan. I think particularly around the student safety precautions, all of the work around temperature checks, the thoughts around buses, the cleaning and the air filters, I just found that very inspiring, might not quite be the right word, given the context, but just, I'm just grateful for it, and I appreciate you and the team. And also the piece about aligning curricula across the district in between the in-person options and the digital academy, that's a lot of work, and I just want to say thank you, and I think that's going to make a huge difference. Most of the questions I had, other board members have asked, I think the only two things I'll mention that I don't think have come up yet is one about, you know, this, this question about, at what point will we be so concerned with the condition, health conditions around CPS, that we decide that we need to be fully virtual? And I'm, I'm grateful for the data that we're collecting. I think the idea that I want to offer is that we decide in advance what our go, no-go point is, or like, what, what's the set of conditions that if they are true, that means we're going to flip to them, just so we're not having to come up with that in real time, but that, you know, we get advice from the Health Commissioner, we get advice from, whether it's children's or whomever, but that we figure out in advance, this is the point at which we all believe that the only responsible thing to do is be remote. That was one thought. And then my second thought was, on the academic learning plan, I can't tell, I, I think it's still too early for what I'm about to suggest, but I think we're getting there soon, which is that we decide on what our goals are going to be for the year. is that we decide on what our goals are going to be for the year. And I think that will be a powerful way of keeping us focused and honest about like, what's working really well that we should celebrate, and what are the issues that we need to address together. So I have a feeling that that's coming, and I'm excited to have that conversation with folks. And I certainly understand why all of the safety planning needs to come first, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Could respond to the last one first. So in terms of setting some very specific measures, we believe that's going to be important for us to do the diagnostic assessments at the beginning of the school year that Deputy Superintendent Mott mentioned, get a baseline to see where our kids landed at the end of last year. Just keep in mind that last year, in the spring, the students did not take the state assessment, there was a waiver. And so using district assessments, not district-developed, but district-assessments to set a baseline is a part of our thinking in terms of setting goals for our kids academically. In terms of the go, no-go, in the superintendent's report, I'm going to lay out some key pieces of information that I believe will be critical for us to use. And then, at some point in time, very soon, bring some suggestions or recommend considerations for the board to think about in deciding go or no-go.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, last comment, and Mr. Marosky, last comment, so we can move on.
One comment particularly, I'm interested in following the advice of the superintendent and having our own standards as to when we move or we don't move. I'm not going to surrender the role or the authority of the board to some sort of codification based on what's happening around. I think we'll do the right thing, but I don't want to surrender this. I just want to make sure I've got that in. The, just two things, if I could. I think general counsel may have to help us understand or help the public understand what is meant by homeschooling versus keeping the kids out of CPS. It's a very different setup, and I don't want our parents to actually get into trouble because, I mean, there's a whole, no, those are two very different terms. So I think we need to probably be a little bit more expressive about that. And then finally, thank you for the extra time. I didn't hear about extracurricular. And I, and of course, as you all know, I'm always worried about the resources regarding buses.
Sure.
That's the Achilles' heel in, I think, an awful lot of this. So, but extracurricular, have we made a determination?
So can I ask the first question first? In terms of homeschooling, so I dealt in homeschooling for a long time and still have to actually sign up. So there is a very distinct difference between having a student classified as being homeschooled and a parent just keeping the child home and they're working with them. So in order to have a student designated homeschool, there's an application process that the parent must complete through the Ohio Department of Education. We have a clerical support who works on that with our parents. And so you get the application, it talks about all the curriculum and the number of hours that the student has to be able to verify has been completed, or the parent has to verify that it's been completed. There are assessments that are also required under the homeschool guidance. The parent completes the application outlining the curriculum and even the textbooks that they will use or digital materials they will use, and then has to be submitted to the district for our approval. Then we have a 10-point checklist in which we go through to make sure that the parent has all of those components completed. And if they have them all completed, then they'll have a letter that has my signature on it, that then will go to the Ohio Department of Education. If there are any gaps on any of those 10 points, then the parent is sent a letter to say, these three things you have not yet completed. And so therefore, your homeschool application will not be completed until that's done. He's giving me the thumbs up that that's right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Extracurricular?
Homeschool, okay, so do we go into extracurricular now?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And I do want to remind board members, we do need to move on. Go ahead, Miss Bowers, trying to push us on. We have 826 people.
Yes, ma'am. Wait, superintendent, thank you, just for clarity. So homeschool is more of a, is that a different, like you sign out of CPS and you're in this co-op?
Correct.
Co-op?
Correct.
So if a parent decides to do homeschooling, do all those points, and then they want to instruct their own child, how does that affect them when they want to come back to CPS?
They would just have to re-enroll within CPS if they live within their guidelines. One thing that I failed to mention is that a child who is being homeschooled still can have access to some of the services provided at school, like sports, extracurricular, music lessons. So sometimes homeschool children take advantage of it, sometimes they do not.
Okay, so if I'm a parent and I have a child in a magnet program, and I decide to do homeschooling, not the blended or not CDA?
Yes.
Will I be able to move back?
Yes.
Okay, to my spot at my magnet school next year?
Yes, but something that you're bringing forward to my mind, just as a reminder or clarification, when a child is being homeschooled, they will not provide any resources from CPS. So we will not provide the technology nor the curriculum. The parent is doing all of that on their own, which is very different than our digital academy, in which we will provide the technology and the curriculum and access to extracurricular activities as well. So it's our responsibility when they're at digital. It is not the district's responsibility when they're being homeschooled, other than those extracurricular activities.
And identify that the parent is meeting those bullets of expectation regarding curriculum.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. Bolton, I got you, I believe, did you have a second part to this question? Extracurricular?
Yes, so in terms of extracurricular, we will look very closely and continue to monitor the Athletic Association in terms of what they're recommending around starting sports. In terms of non-sports-related extracurricular, we plan to still be able to move forward with it. We do plan to make some reductions as it relates to our elementary students. We have to very carefully, though, look at the schedule of when the, of when our students are in school, on A week or B week, if you're in A group or B group. Because maybe I'm in, I'm in an A group, and the extracurricular activity takes place on a day that I'm not there, are we going to transport the kids then from home to the extracurricular activity by providing a bus pass? And so we're working through that right now, but I will just say that it is a bit of a complex situation to think about. The kid is not in school today, but yet their extracurricular activities are in school. And it's hard to match up every extracurricular activity to when the kids are in school if they have to be separated on A, B group.
Okay. Mr. Marosky, last question.
Thank you, President Jones. For the superintendent, and it might have been said, I know it's on the timeline, the big, massive timeline that I've seen, but what is the deadline for parents to decide if they're going to stay with us or enroll in digital to keep their spot?
So we haven't set a cutoff date.
Okay.
We haven't, we don't want to limit parents' opportunity to make a decision as they get closer. We are very carefully looking at the applications and requests for digital. I know in one week, we received like 267 phone calls related to digital alone. So we're not going to have a cutoff at this point. We will continue, but at some point, we will have to do a cutoff only for staffing purposes and transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just to, so we can move on, the few questions that I had have been answered, but I'll reserve any other questions or comments for the superintendent's report, so we can move on. Okay, anyone have any kudos? Okay, thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Kudo to whoever and all the thousands of people and hundreds of brains and whatever that helped put this together, which really is probably less than 50 people that did all this work. But it's friggin' impressive.
Yes, thank you. Okay, hearing no other kudos, Ms. Bates, retirements?
Yes, we have several retirements to acknowledge this morning from our certificated staff. We have three teachers, David J. Fenton, Carmine H. Patton, and Marcia H. Ziger. And from our civil service personnel, Linda Spitznagle. So we congratulate these professionals on their new status in life and profession, and we wish them well and thank them for their service to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. To speak, you will need to send a request, and you should have sent that in the first 15 minutes of the meeting. If you did not do that, then unfortunately, we're not able to recognize you. So you should have clicked on the hand located on your, the hand icon on your screen. So there is, there is no need to redo this or wait for the previous speaker. Our treasurer will be monitoring the hands and will call you in order. Once the request has been granted by Treasurer Wagner, you will receive a notice on your screen, click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes. Two minutes, I want to repeat that again, to speak. And Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your two minutes are up, please refrain from discussing any personnel items. Okay. Treasurer Wagner?
We currently have 41 people who have raised their hands, and I've pulled them all in so they need to start accepting. The first person who accepts is, will go first. Sarah Maloney, you are our first speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you for all the hard work that everyone has put in to the plan for this fall. I'm sure that there's been a lot of sleepless nights over trying to get the plans in place. My concern is the fact that a lot of this implementation of the plan is going to fall onto the
Hello?
Hello?
Is this my two minutes presently?
What's happening?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Does anybody have video?
No.
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 This is great.
Hello?
I can only see Mr. Lindy.
Hey, can folks hear me?
I can only hear and see Mr. Lindy.
Yeah, my theory is we lost the main room, everyone. So I think I'm in a room with everybody who volunteered to speak, but I don't think I can see the main boardroom yet. I'm hoping that they get us back, but I think we're all on the same boat together for the moment.
Okay.
There they are. There they were. I am getting video from the main room, but I'm not getting any audio from there.
Sarah, go ahead. Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for the plan. It sounds like you guys have spent a lot of time implementing something that sounds like there is a good chance of success. My concern is that it looks like a lot of the success to implement this plan is going to fall on the teachers and the staff. So my concern is giving the teachers some extra time to implement this. And have you considered a later start date for the teachers, you know, later start date for school, so that the teachers have more time to, to implement this?
Sarah, for hearing of the public, for hearing of the public, we're not able to respond directly to questions. We will note the questions, but this is an opportunity for you just to express your concerns and, to us. But we will not respond directly to questions at this time. I don't think she heard me. Okay. But I think we, yeah. Did you hear us?
Okay. Then can I, okay, can I say something?
Yeah, you, yeah, if you, in your two minutes.
Sure, 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 okay. So I request that for the 2021 school year, that CPS Board consider the district school's commencement date be delayed from the original date of August 24th to the date after the 2020 Labor Day holiday. The coronavirus pandemic has brought about unprecedented times and is having multifaceted effects that stretch to all aspects of our lives. The educational system and our children's education are undeniably affected by this. Pushing the start date for school back will allow more time to train and prepare. While it is true that having our children off school longer than usual is an undeniable hardship on many families, the quality of our children's education must be considered. Board members, principals, teachers, and all staff have much to do to prepare for the upcoming school year. The additional time is needed to learn and rehearse new health and safety protocols, new curricular and blended learning strategies need to be implemented based on the AB schedule. Physical changes
Excuse me, Sarah, but you are past your two minutes. We're going to have to, if you, I will, we will allow you to finish this thought, but we're going to have to ask you to close out.
Okay, sure. Physical changes need to be made to buildings to accommodate the protocols and blended learning strategy, and educate and train families to students for the changes being made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcy, if you tell your, our next speaker, please go ahead.
Okay. And my camera is reversed, so I will turn off my screen. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Hate when that happens. Good morning, boys. Good morning, superintendent Mitchell. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Because I'm on the clock, I'm
I think it's excellent detail and we just need to stay on point so that we don't introduce any confusion in there. I do concur with the previous speaker. I do question whether or not it was called a goal to have to be put in place when we really be ready for August 24th. And I
Ms. Yutel, your two minutes are up. If you can finish this thought, I'd appreciate it.
I can.
Okay.
My concern is just making sure that everybody, including the parents, have everything they need to start so successfully. So I concur with the idea of considering pushing that start date back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So Superintendent, I'm gonna allow you the opportunity to respond to what seems to be a recurring thing with just the two speakers.
Yes, so two quick responses. So one is in terms of the responsibility of what the staff will have to do in order to make sure that the building is a safe place for everyone. Just keep in mind that when we return, half of the kids will be there. And so when you look at the numbers for many schools, the numbers are actually really pretty low in terms of the numbers. And so we believe with the additional staff who will be in the buildings along with the really low number of students by classroom, that it will be manageable. However, we will monitor and make adjustments all along the way. In terms of a start after the Labor Day holiday, we as an administration looked at that and considering that half of the kids will be coming back in addition to having all the extra staff to help the kids along the way, we felt that it was really important not to lose those two weeks of instruction before the Labor Day holiday, especially considering that our kids have not seen their teachers since last March. We felt that it was important to not cut the school year shorter by starting after the Labor Day holiday. Obviously, we will monitor the data and be able to give information to the board all along the way, but we're trying to build in as much instructional time as possible for our young people.
Thank you, Superintendent. Treasurer Wagner.
Beth Ursom, you're next, please.
Great. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for letting me talk to you. I'm coming here today not to talk about COVID, but to express my deep concerns on the recent change on the admission test for Walnut Hills and Dater High School. Specifically, I'm very concerned about the dramatic reduction in passing scores for non-white students on this new test which CPS adopted last year. In 2018-19 with the old test, of the students where race was identified, 255 non-white students passed the admission test. That declined to only 121 for this new test, a decrease of more than 50%. The decline for black students was even more pronounced, 155 down to 70. This fact is particularly concerning at this point in time. For students where race was identified, this year's results represents a passing rate of less than 4% or one out of 20 for black CPS sixth graders and less than 6% for non-white students. White students had a passing rate close to 50%, where of the students where race was identified, less than 30% of the passing students were non-white. I would like to understand your perspective on the significant decline in the passing rate for non-white students. Are you sure there wasn't bias in the test? And I find myself asking the question, why are you choosing to move to a test which apparently appears to screen out more non-white students? This test also showed a real difference by school. In 2018-19, just two CPS schools had no children passing the test. With the new test, that number grew to thirteen schools. A successful school like Evanston Academy, which had 90% of its sixth grader passing the state test, had only two students pass the test. So something is different. This reduction of resident CPS students eligible
Yes, ma'am, if you could finish this thought, we'd appreciate it. Your two minutes are up, so please.
Sure. But this reduction of resident students seems to be compounded by enrollment of dozens of students from outside the district who are attending Walnut Hills. And so the question is, as you reduce the number of in-district students, are you bringing in more out-of-district students? So again, I want
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna have to move on. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Hala Karim.
Superintendent Laura Mitchell and members of the school board, you have just as much access to the news as I do. I know that you've seen the data. Ohio currently boasts 65,000 cases of COVID and 3,000 deaths. Transmissions and deaths are on the rise, hospitalizations are on the rise. Despite what our political leadership wants, let's not grow accustomed to these death counts. But I'm not here to read current events to you. I know you're aware. I'm here to beg you to protect the lives of the thousands of people in your employ and the many students who call CPS home. I'm here to plead for my life as an educator and the lives of my fellow teachers, paraprofessionals, and students. How absurd is it that I have to speak before you and ask you not to put us in immediate danger? What dystopia are we living in? Educators across the country have largely been left out of the discourse that directly impacts our lives and the lives of our families. The in-person blended model that sees staff in buildings five days a week is discriminatory towards high-risk groups. Staff who are immunocompromised, staff who are elderly, their best options are leaving the district, taking unpaid leave of absence, or being shepherded into a school that could, where they could easily contract a disease that could kill them or leave them with long-term consequences, effects of which we still don't know the full scope. And I'm sure you're aware, if people in your direct employer aren't considered high-risk, they're likely in regular contact with someone who is. I have coworkers who live with elderly parents, parents who need regular hospital care. Everyone is tangentially affected. Are we supposed to isolate ourselves for our professional duties? Am I supposed to not see my parents for nine months? Granted, I make it long. How do you think this is gonna affect us emotionally or physically? You know, when I received a survey from the district over a week ago, I thought perhaps you were trying to gauge staff's anxiety of returning against the advice of medical professionals. I was disheartened and I felt disrespected by what it asked instead. How likely are you willing to leave, it asked? Immediately, another fear had been realized. My district, like many other districts, considers their staff to be disposable, replaceable cogs. They simply wanted to know if I was too scared to subject myself to a dangerous workplace environment so they could find someone else to do it. I'd like to think that a district
Excuse me. Thank you. If you could finish your thought, your two minutes are up.
My final thought is teachers are not martyrs. Please stop treating us as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay with no last name. Go ahead, Lindsay.
I am a teacher within the district. My mother is in the at-risk category. She is 60. She has diabetes and a brain aneurysm. I am her caretaker and I spend a large majority of my personal time helping her. You for two weeks, I took only one day of sick leave. I slept in the hospital every night and returned to work every single day. If she is exposed to coronavirus, she will die and my life will be forever affected. It is a fact that asymptomatic children can transmit the virus and it is a fact that children can die from this virus. By sending me, my students, and my coworkers back to in-person teaching, you are making a very clear and loud statement that you do not care about the risk that it poses to the members of our community. Like most of my coworkers, I am not in a financial position to take the year-long leave of absence and I know I cannot take the leave of absence from caring for my mother. I know that many of my students will not have the same mindset about masks that I do because for some reason, the whole nation is divided on the topic. Along with that, masks are just an addition to uniform policies that so many of us already struggle to uphold. I also expect that much like cleaning supplies and safety supplies from previous year's teaching, there will never be enough and it will be my job to ensure those items are purchased for my classroom. I know that you are still in the beginning stages of planning and so many wrinkles still need to be ironed out, but please consider giving remote options to employees like me with immediate family members that are at risk and employees that are at risk themselves. Please show us the foundation of your district, the parts of the machine that make it run that have been doing backbreaking work for years for the children that we all love. Please show us that our lives matter to you, that we aren't easily replaced. If you push us to go back, the deaths that will undoubtedly result will be on your hands. You have the power to change this. Please do.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alice Flanders. Go ahead, Alice.
There. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to state that I don't envy your current curriculum trying to figure out how to reopen schools next month, and I hope that the needs of special education students and teachers and English as second language families within the system are looming larger than this presentation implied. I'm also here to voice my support for removing all Cincinnati police officers from Cincinnati public schools. Police do not belong in schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Tobert. Go ahead, Kim.
Hi, I am a teacher at Dater High School. I would like to, first of all, echo the thoughts of my fellow teachers about the concern for adequate cleaning supplies and the extra weight this is going to put on our staff. I think we all know that we can plan all we want, but in reality, most of the cleaning and most of the access to these supplies will fall on teachers' shoulders. There are still so many questions that we have concerning this plan that need to be addressed, specifically concerning what things that happen when students and/or staff refuse to wear masks, if they will be sent home, or if it will just be another dress code violation. We also need to know what happens when a child is sick and a parent cannot pick them up. Do they stay at school and then get on the bus, potentially affecting other children who will then come into our classrooms? We also want to know if one of our children or one of our teachers gets sick, do we quarantine that entire class for two weeks? If teachers have to do this more than twice, we will inevitably run out of both sick days and the additional 10 sick days that the board plans on giving us. In addition, the plans for when students or staff are sick include notifying parents but did not include anything about the specific guidelines for shutting down a classroom or shutting down a school. We would also like to request that there is a specific resolution from the board stating when we will switch to remote learning. We need to be following the guidelines, especially those step forth by fourths hills where when we reach that purple level four, we are not in school. Finally, as teachers and I suspect much of our staff, we are all still very concerned about the thought of riffing 700 employees. Multiple times in this meeting, it has been stated how many additional staff we need and we have not been updated on that riffing process. We would like our questions answered before we are forced back into an unsafe environment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is the first initial B, last name Glass. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, first I wanted to say to Superintendent Mitchell, thank you. I am a teacher at Roselon and I echo many of the concerns and fears of my colleagues, but the plan does make me feel a little bit more, a little bit better. I know that you guys don't answer questions during this time, so I'm just going to throw out some of the questions that my colleagues and I have had. One question, as you know, Roselon has a high amount of MD units and medically fragile kids. Will our MD units have to do the two-day, three-days since they have like the highest number in an MD unit? Will we have any extra precautions taken since so many of our children are medically fragile, so many of our regular ed students go home to medically fragile siblings? Also, just a concern, Roselon had, for the last two years, we've had massive issues with our air system where some days, some classrooms feel like they're an oven and others feel like they're a meat locker. And we are hoping that this will be fixed this year. Finally, we've heard that grades two and up will be receiving devices, but we haven't heard anything about K and one. I'm hoping that that's because that the devices that are being traded in are going to be reformatted and going out to K one, but I hope that you don't leave our littles out of the loop because even though remote learning is hard for the little ones, they can do it. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Maggie Nelson. Go ahead, Maggie.
I am a pre-K teacher and parent. I'm wondering more about the pre-K plan. As a teacher and parent, I'm still really confused. Thank you, Mr. Metzer and Mr. Rosky for asking about pre-K. I noticed we were left out of the childcare conversation, even though some of our buildings have been used to the district. It's also my understanding that pre-K team does not intend to send home any work packets for remote learning. My daughter's in a pre-K Montessori and I believe she will follow the A and B group schedule, but it sounds like I will be going five days with all students. And as a tuition-paying family, I'm wondering if we will pay full tuition for our child to be in person five out of 10 days because she is Montessori and we'll need to make additional childcare arrangements. One of the emails I've received as a teacher says that there will be a divider in the classroom of nine students on one side with a teacher, nine students on one side with a paraprofessional. This means that students will have some days where they will not be with a certified teacher and paraprofessionals will essentially now have the same responsibilities as the lead teacher during the school day without seeing an increase to their hourly wage. Or are we gonna be spacing out 18 and 23 and 4-year-olds without a divider? And does this include spacing when we have 18 to 20 students and with a lot of furniture around, which is really hard to space them out, especially at nap time? I have a couple concerns that were major concerns even before March. We don't have enough time during contracted hours to sanitize our room. The building engineers and custodians do a lot to clean our floors, take out our garbage, bathrooms, which helps a lot, but paraprofessionals and teachers are responsible for cleaning all the materials, surface areas, furniture, including cuts, and our students are with us all day. Pre-K staff needs more time during contracted hours to ensure that our learning environment is properly sanitized. During COVID guidelines, our pre-K
Excuse me. If you could finish this thought, your two minutes are up.
Thank you.
And as a tuition-paying family, I'm wondering if we will pay full tuition for our child to be in person five out of 10 days because she is Montessori, and we'll need to make additional childcare arrangements. One of the emails I've received as a teacher says that there will be a divider in the classroom of nine students on one side with a teacher, nine students on one side with a paraprofessional. This means that students will have some days where they will not be with a certified teacher, and paraprofessionals will essentially now have the same responsibilities as the lead teacher during the school day without seeing an increase to their hourly wage. Or are we going to be spacing out 18, 23, and 4-year-olds without a divider? And does this include spacing when we have 18 to 20 students and with a lot of furniture around, which is really hard to space them out, especially at nap time? I have a couple concerns that were major concerns even before March. We don't have enough time during contracted hours to sanitize our room. The building engineers and custodians do a lot to clean our floors, take out our garbage, bathrooms, which helps a lot, but paraprofessionals and teachers are responsible for cleaning all the materials, surface areas, furniture, including cuts, and our students are with us all day. Pre-K staff needs more time during contracted hours to ensure that our learning environment is properly sanitized. During COVID, guidelines are pre-K.
Excuse me. If you could finish this thought, your two minutes are up.
Thank you. And we need to stay in a ratio of nine to one. How are we going to be nine to one? For example, I would just want clear protocols on staying in a nine-to-one ratio, especially for about 700 students who do not have bathrooms in the classroom. Protocols on how we're supposed to safely space nine students when a student has an accident and we have to take all of our groups to the bathroom. And just, I want to know that CFT and teacher and paraprofessional voices have been included.
Thank, thank you. We, we need to move on. My apologies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa with no last name. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, most of my concerns were addressed by Lindsay and Kim, but I have another concern about the Palm teachers will be moving from room to room, and will they be at risk? And what about them spreading germs to the, to the children? I see that you are all sitting six feet apart, but when you speak, you're taking your masks off, and you are way older than seven- and eight-year-olds. I just want to make sure that everybody at school is safe and that the concerns are met. My other question is, what if we have five kids at the beginning of the alphabet, but 20 kids at the end of the alphabet on our class lists? And will teachers be, be tested? And how often? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole, is it Feely? Go ahead, Nicole.
I'm Nicole Feely, and I am a teacher with CPS. Thank you for your time. Many teachers in the district do not have their own room and push into other teachers' classrooms. There are also many teachers in the district that teach every student in their buildings and/or work in multiple schools in the district. These teachers are now also being asked to push into others' classrooms to minimize contact between students. For these teachers, this creates unique challenges to maintaining safe procedures, yet I have not heard this addressed by either the board or the district. If the point of keeping students in one room is to create an insular and thus supposedly safer environment, do we not, in essence, contaminate that environment when someone who has seen up to 150 students or up to 800 students a month even then enters that classroom? This also demands teachers work in an environment in which they have no control over the level of sanitization that has occurred prior to entering those rooms. How will the district address the increased risk to staff and students relative to these situations? Finally, teachers make a lot of sacrifices for our students. That should not include our lives or the lives of our families. Please consider, please reconsider opening up the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jillian with no last name. Go ahead, Jillian.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Go ahead.
Okay, hi. I have been trying to find the search for additional buildings to try to get students to come to school more days. And so I guess my question, and I don't know where are we in that process? I would just like to kind of speak for all the parents that we just need to find a plan so that everyone can figure out their lives, like, their whole lives for the students. And having this kind of specter of, oh, maybe we'll have more. Being a teacher located, it can be really stressful for parents and stuff. We can come to a conclusion on that, but better. The second question I have is that Superintendent Mitchell, I know you have scheduled it, we sent out last year, uh, following spring to, like, the virtual learning. I don't know where to get it. I just had to search their email. And I have three kids that are in schools, and the communication varies wildly, so hoping that maybe all of that will show up on that CPS staff board. And if that's not the plan, then maybe that can be the plan. And yeah, that's all. Thank you so much for all the hard work you guys are doing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Robbins. Go ahead, Jen.
Hi, I had prepared a state, a statement in support of the blended learning plan over the, uh, over the five-day-a-week plan, because I anticipate a lot of people would be coming here yelling at you for having not chosen the five-day-a-week plan. I was going to say that I was glad that you had not chosen the five-day-a-week plan, but it seems that may not be necessary, and I don't need to take your time. So thank you for your hard work. That plan that I just saw presented was really, really elaborate, put together in a short time, and I really appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Svenney, please. Go ahead, Andrea.
Good morning, everybody. I first want to thank everybody for their time and effort to put into today's presentation. As Superintendent Mitchell stated to me in the assembly presentation, we look forward to the implementation. With implementation comes question. So I am curious about the transparency of the under just $250,000 in CARES Act funding that are in the superintendent recommendations for today, paying over 160 teachers and 30 principals for stipends for planning in July and August, which is awesome. I'm glad people are getting paid. I'm glad we're planning, but what does that look like? How would that be reported out to staff and be reported out to the public? We need some clarification on the visitor and field trip policies, as there was some confusion around several statements made during today's presentation. Are we allowed to take field trips within 100-mile radius? And what defines an essential or nonessential visitor to our buildings? I'm a volunteer at our juvenile detention center, which is also a CPS satellite school. We've been deemed nonessential since March. And then what does virtual learning look like for our kids who are incarcerated there? Because I've not been able to get answers on that either. There was a comment made about supports and resources in place to support students when they are at home. What does that look like? Because teachers have been kind of told we're not going to be expected to communicate with those students when they're at home, as we will have students in our classroom. Lastly, I am concerned but also excited about our suspension of A to S, A to E for this school year, but we have to try something new. If we're talking about restorative justice, we need to actually implement that. Lastly, I am still waiting on minority contract information for the district. Right now, I have 10 tabs pulled up on my computer from 10 companies owned by white folks that we've given hundreds of thousands of dollars to in these last few months. And then lastly, I'm still waiting for information on Cincinnati Public Schools partnership with the Cincinnati Blue Line Foundation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Monique Bush. Go ahead, Monique.
I just had two concerns. My first concern was about who, where we have certain, sometimes severe behaviors, and where students are, especially in the high school level, and students are not wanting to keep on their mask or not following the social distance protocol. What will be the protocol for, um, to handle those type of severe behaviors? And then my other concern is about the classrooms that are particularly small. How will we be able to handle the social distance of six feet apart if the classroom is not large enough to accommodate students in the right way? And those are my questions for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zen. Go ahead, Zen.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, I am seeking to know whether or not you'll be seeking substitute custodians. We spent the last academic year with no less than a dozen days without paper towels, toilet paper, and/or soap in our bathrooms. One day, we had none of those three necessary items. We are also most often understaffed on our campus, and there are regular days when custodians have to do what they call gang clean, where all they do is pull the trash. Despite gang cleaning, even if they are staffed accurately, out of a year, my classroom was mopped once, and that was because of a specific spill that I requested cleaned up. I'm also seconding HVAC concerns because we also have rooms that are scalding hot and rooms that are refrigerators. We also have a room in the lower level that the air circulation was completely turned off because of a screeching sound when the air was on. If a teacher has five classes a day with, let's say, 15 students each, do all of those students then stay home and quarantine if one participant in the class, whether teacher or staff, starts showing symptoms? Or will you require positive test results? Some of the tests are showing two to three weeks return, which will exceed the 14-day quarantine standard by CDC guidelines. Also, substitutes are going to be teaching in multiple schools, so if they are diagnosed with COVID or show symptoms, will all schools and all of their children have to be then quarantined that that substitute has been in for the past few days? In addition, where will kids eat? If they are not eating in the cafeteria and are eating in our classrooms, as previously suggested, who is going to monitor those children in all of those separate classrooms? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vince Heskatrees. Go ahead, Vince.
Okay. I'm a teacher in Cincinnati Public Schools, and I'm basically talking about accountability here. For the graduation, I attended a graduation, and a lot of us emptied out of the classes early this year. There was emails and letters sent out about being specific, and we're going to take temperatures, we're going to monitor people who are in and out of the building. There's only one entrance and exit. However, when I got there, there was none of that happening. At the graduation I was at, not one temperature was taken six feet distance. It's not happening. There, I feel like this happens a lot with a lot of CPS guidelines, is they make a strong statement, but it does not follow through. So we really need accountability with this because whether it's this or something as silly as dress code, where, you know, you have one teacher on your team not following through, and it ruins it for everybody else. So if a teacher does not follow through on this stuff, will they be held accountable? How will the building be held accountable? I think that really needs to be addressed. Secondly, we need to consider teachers in this plan, in these plans a lot more. If you've noticed, a number of teachers that are speaking at these meetings versus parents and students, it is mostly teachers saying, "We have concerns." I haven't really heard a lot about them being addressed. A lot of good points were made earlier that I was going to make about how often teachers are being tested. A lot of athletes that are in sports right now are getting tested every two days. I highly doubt that'll happen for teachers. And also, we've had issues in the past of just transparency as far as inner, inner building for things like, important things like lockdowns. I've found out more information from the students about what was happening in the lockdown and why than the administration itself. So transparency to teachers is also a huge issue. A good reason, a good fix to that would be the dashboard that you guys mentioned. Will teachers have full access to that, or that be an admin thing? Because I've talked with a lot of my coworkers, and we're concerned that we would even be notified if a student came down with COVID in our class. What would we do?
Thank you. Excuse me, sir, but you've exhausted your two minutes. If you could finish your thought so we can move on, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Bottom line, I know you guys are scrambling to put together this, this plan, and I commend you guys for that, but don't rush this back to meet an arbitrary date in August. Make sure we do this safe and keep everybody, especially the teachers, in mind here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea C. Go ahead, Andrea.
Hi, the American Academy of Pediatricians has new statements regarding reopening after the Trump administration used their previous statements to call for a full reopening of all the schools, and they were criticized for not considering the safety of school staff. Dr. Sally Goza, the association's president, says that local coronavirus infection rates and hotspots have to be taken into consideration to safely reopen school. The AAP statement says, "For instance, schools in areas with high level of COVID-19 community spread should not be compelled to reopen against the judgment of local experts. A one-size-fits-all approach is not appropriate for return-to-school decisions," the statement reads. According to our local experts, we are at level three out of four and trending upwards to purple. Levels two through four all say to decrease interactions. At which level are you comfortable sending us into our buildings? As a teacher, I have to say that I am still really concerned about the safety for my students, my coworkers, my family, and myself. I am terrified that we're going to have, or staff and/or students die, and I'm just not sure we're all prepared for that. I'd also like to say that another teacher had asked me to share that she is worried for her own child that has underlying health conditions. She is choosing to have virtual learning for her child, but is still expected to work in a school building five days a week. And then I wanted to bring up a point that in Hidalgo County, Texas, three case, this is what it reads, three cases this week of when a child infected both parents, and both parents are now dead. So I just wanted to point out that children are spreading this, and it is a pandemic, and on behalf of teachers and staff, we're really scared for our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kalia Shaw. Go ahead.
Hello? Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I want to just first off start by saying that I do echo many of the concerns that have been brought forth before me, including extending the start of the school year. And then a lot of the concerns that the teachers have, I have as a parent of a student who attends SCPA. I am 100% against this blended model or opening the school in this fashion, period. I am 100% for a virtual learning experience. I do believe that COVID will be positive in the SCPA building specifically, even with the precautions that have been outlined and the safeguards that you believe the building and the air within the building will have. I do not feel confident in the ability of the system, the CPS system, to get ahead of this for the safety of our children, for your faculty and staff. The administration skimmed over the flow chart outlining next steps when children, faculty, and staff become infected or are exposed. I need to know, how does Digital Academy accommodate the specific arts curriculum of SCPA? I'm the parent of a high schooler, and I'm very concerned about the track that she was on for her career, post-high school, post-college. I don't know if I put her in Digital Academy, if she will receive the instruction specific to her majors in SCPA. The communication from the homeschool and around that specific issue has been dismal. I did not hear in the presentation that there's a testing schematic in place for the teachers and the staff, or if temperatures will be taken every day of students. Get ahead of this. Please make a decision to reverse your decision for blended and opt for a virtual learning experience for all, if at all possible. I think that is the safest way. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Molly Welbrock. Go ahead, Monique.
Hi, I too am a teacher in the district. Unlike some
Unlike some of the other teachers, I am not immunocompromised and I don't have family that I take care of. So I do support having a more creative solution, perhaps going back to school full-time or having remote learning. The teachers that are compromised and scared and terrified for their lives and their families' lives should have the option to be remote learning teachers within their school building so that we can keep our communities together. If we chose this option, teachers like me who are ready to return to a full week can. Naturally, classes will be smaller because some families will choose remote learning. And we'd be double to spread out if needed into the empty classrooms of our remote learning teachers. With this current plan, students will still be exposed to half of their classmates as well as their teacher, who also sees the other half of the class each week. And what about the extra exposure from all the places those students will have to go for childcare on their off days? I'm concerned that preschool and kindergarten and first grade, who are not getting any type of technology, will be left behind, especially in the Montessori classrooms where a six to nine classroom has first, second and third grade. So only two-thirds of that class will have technology on their off days. Now I want to mention a few things from the presentation. There was a suggestion that schools have water bottle filling stations. My school does not, so I'm concerned. Will all schools be given those water filling stations? I want to know who's paying for these individual supplies that we're supposed to have students using. I spend a lot of money out of my own pocket in a typical year. I should not have to spend additional money for cleaning supplies or additional school supplies because this is what the district is choosing. In terms of the ventilation, my school often smells like sewage. So I don't understand how all of a sudden our ventilation is going to be so much better. I just don't have faith that it will. I'm also concerned because many teachers in many of the buildings are told, we're not allowed to open our windows ever, no matter what. If we are going back to school, we need to have the option to open our windows if we choose.
Excuse me, ma'am, but you've exhausted your two minutes. If you could finish your thought so we can move on, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Lastly, I just want to note the irony of the board asking a presenter who was in the room with you to remove their masks so they could be heard during this meeting. Yeah, you expect teachers and students to wear masks in the classroom all day. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Holly Miller. Go ahead, Holly.
Um, yes, so I work at Roseland Condon and I work with medically fragile students. So my concern is, um, very, can you hear me? Okay. Concern one is, please? Okay, can you see me now? Okay, so I work at Roseland Condon and my concern would be this. Last school year, many of my students fired nursing in order to attend, due to the district shortage of nurses. The nurses that came into my classroom were agency nurses that we use. Those agency nurses worked full-time nursing homes all over the city. So my question is, have we addressed the nursing needs? Are students' medical conditions that warrant a presence with them? Are we planning on using agency nurses thereby, um, um, putting at risk all nursing homes that these agencies come from? Um, so that is a very huge concern. And I would prefer to, um, I have a mother-in-law active, you know, my husband is an only child. I take care of her and I can't see. Also at Roseland Condon, last school year, we went into our building one day and higher above water. We were in slight because our condenser had just deposited water over, which then led to specialized equipment for students with severe disabilities. So I would, um, definitely urge, uh, the board to take a different approach to our mental, um, at Roseland specifically.
Thank, excuse me, but, excuse me, ma'am, but you've exhausted your two minutes. Please finish your thought.
Yes, so I would strongly urge the board not to use outside agency nursing staff in any capacity next school year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Simpson. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Several concerns regarding the grouping of children alphabetically. So I'm really imploring you all to allow them to have their own autonomy in deciding how their schools will be split into two groups and also allow parents to be involved in these decisions. I think a simple survey with three choices would suffice to make this logical and plausible for each school themselves. For parents that are self-employed, have custody of residents, essential workers or unsupportive employees, we need the ability to pick our days or else face severe economic distress. This is especially in regards to Montessori schools where the three to six classroom is a mixture of preschool and kindergarten students. And the preschoolers leave at noon, which means that the kindergarten class, if it's mostly kindergarten or most preschool, gets a severe disadvantage from other classes. So please, consider allowing schools to have autonomy with final options. Otherwise, the equity problems that staggered scheduling already caused will be tripled. So please, let's make at least one thing easier for parents this year. Allow parents to pick their preferred group. Thank you.
Go ahead, Gabrielle. Go ahead, Gabrielle. We can't hear you. We still can't hear you. Check to make sure you're unmuted on your side. She's been having technical difficulties. She's been kicked on and off a couple of times. So I was trying to get her in before she lost connection again. We'll go on to the next speaker until, um, that would be Rick Kirkoff. Go ahead, Rick.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, uh, teach at Dater High School and, um, I just wanted to reiterate what Zen had said earlier about our air ventilation system was all totally accurate. Um, there are many days that my room and the room next door to me are 15 degrees different. Um, and s- some days I'm the hot room and sometimes I'm the cold room. Um, so my faith in clean air being in the building is, you could, you could understand my skepticism there. Um, I have a concern about, when are we going to see these procedures for, um, if I wake up with a fever and I do the responsible thing and self-report, what does that mean? What's the procedure for when do I get to come back to school the next day if I don't have a fever? Or do I have to get a test then? What, uh, you know, I, I don't know if you have that worked out yet. And if you do or if you don't, when is that going to be communicated? Uh, I feel like as a teacher, I'm kind of out of the loop in some of the communications that we need, um, so that we can understand, um, what our processes might be. And we, we really need to, um, be able to prepare for what's, for what's coming up on us here. Um, the other thing is, I'm very concerned about being asked to do a full-time job in person, five days a week in person and five days a week online. And I don't even know what tools would be available in terms of video presentations that I could make myself. I don't even know what I can use to do that. As far as I know, CPS doesn't have a, uh, something that I can create videos for. Now, last year we used something called Screencastify because they gave it to us for free.
Excuse me, your two minutes are up. If you could please finish your thought.
Yes, I'd just like to know what, uh, online tools are available and get those communications out to teachers, even if we don't know, even if you don't know of answer right now, when you would know the answers. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to give Gabrielle a try again. She was able to work out. Go ahead, Gabrielle.
Can you hear me now? I don't know if you can hear me now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Nice, okay. Um, I know so much work has been done already, but I think that there's so much left to do. So I have a few questions that are kind of lingering still. Um, I think that with Montessori schools, the ideas of shared materials and things like that, and also the fact that pre-K classrooms are in the same classrooms. Um, and you had mentioned earlier that they would be on a five-day schedule. Um, I just wasn't sure if that was the same when it's a Montessori classroom. Um, with specials, nothing has been specified that I have heard in regards to specials. Um, and how will those teachers still be serving our students? I think it's incredibly important, if we are going to be doing blended, that we maintain specials. I think it's a vital part of our educate, our child's education. Um, I also haven't heard clarification on recess. Earlier it had been mentioned that recess was being considered to not be a thing. Um, so I would like clarification on that. Um, in addition, a lot of new families that are coming into the school have not been receiving communication from the schools about new procedures and things happening. So I wanted to make sure, um, as a representative from our PTO, that those new families are added to the communication list so they are receiving this new information. Um, I was also confused as how we're going to eliminate 700-plus positions and reduce pay, but we're going to be expecting more from teachers and also providing things like bus monitors and needing additional staff. It doesn't seem to line up, um, to me. Um, echoing what someone else said about matching based on last names and groupings, that will not provide an equitable experience for all of our children, especially considering Montessori classrooms where there are preschools within the classrooms. Um, it just seems like that would not provide fair chances for all of our students within the schools across the whole district. Um, that's all I have. Thank you for all of your work in this so far. And please consider moving forward with, um, a, a distance learning model for the school year.
Okay, our next speaker is Caitlin Taylor. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Hi there, can you hear me? All right, um, hello, my name is Caitlin Taylor and I'm an intervention specialist in CPS. I appreciate the work of the administrative team to know that these decisions will feel incredibly important. I have to admit that as I listen to today's thing, I feel sick to my stomach with anxiety. I appreciate the efforts mentioned in the plan today to increase in awareness of self-care and building systems. However, all educators know that safety comes first on Maslow's Higher Security Rule before we can help students achieve their academic goals. In addition, our CPS teachers are equally important and valid. I feel that safety is incredibly important in regards to COVID-19 and of equal of the more important, safety and justice. Safety goes beyond workshops and teaching boards. It is a system's commitment to equity to keep all of our students and staff safe, no matter which school they attend or teach at in the district. I hope equity is displayed in the implementation of the district's plan for reopening as well as the equity law the district's recommitted to following the murder of George Jordan. I have a few concerns regarding special education and students with disabilities and know that they will not be answered during hearing of public, so I would like to follow up. I'm wondering if students with disabilities who attend specialized classrooms will attend school all five days as previously mentioned. Also, I feel it would be helpful for the Department of Student Services to provide training for intervention specialists and general educators before the school year starts for intervening and assisting students experiencing school behavior while practicing social distancing and other CDC/CPA safety procedures in a restorative way. Specifically, updated CPI or Crisis Prevention Institute training comes to mind for practicing the training within the CDC and CPS safety guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lexi Lopez Mayo. Go ahead, Lexi.
Good morning, uh, my name is Lexi Lopez Mayo. I am a speech pathologist for the district. I have been spearheading the Blended Learning Committee for our department. And I would like to say thank you for finally starting to address the issues with special education. Um, I can, uh, share with you that we, uh, did a survey just for our department. We had, um, two-thirds of our therapists answer. And I have to tell you that over 75% of them are concerned for their health and safety. And they're also concerned that we cannot provide, like, um, remote services, speech remote services, uh, to kids in a, uh, in a manner that is conducive for their progress. Um, as far as the spring, it was painted with very pretty rose-colored glasses and I have to tell you that it was a mess. Um, it was, I'm sorry to tell you, it was a disaster. And so to, to say that it went well and the IEPs and the ETRs and the remote learning was great, that, that, that's a misrepresentation of what actually happened. So you need to know that. Um, I just want to say that, uh, we are still required by IDA to meet kids' minutes, yet we're going to have increased barriers and many, uh, meaningful ethical instruction for, for us who are already overloaded with this plan that you presented today about splitting the kids by last name. That is going to be a detriment to us as far as scheduling is concerned because if we're heavy on one, uh, one group or another, we're not going to be able to reach these kids. Most of all, what I don't understand is that Ms. Mitchell and others keep, uh, mentioning extra staff. But how are extra staff going to be, uh, provided when there's also mention of rifts of over 700 employees? So the reason why I turned on my camera today is because I want you to look and see my face. I have no choice. I have to work. I can't take pay.
Excuse me, your two minutes, your two minutes are up. If you want to finish this sentence, we'd appreciate if you would move on.
Thank you. I wanted you to see me because I wanted you to see that I am a person. I have no choice. I have to work. So that means that I'm either putting my life at risk or my children's life at risk because you're sending me back into the schools by this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean with no last name. Go ahead, Sean.
Hi, um, can you hear me? Are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, my name's Sean Harold. I'm proud to be a Cincinnati Public School teacher and I want nothing more than to be back in the groove, start serving students, igniting curiosity and growth. However, as I, as I've listened to this presentation, I've had, um, more than a multitude of unanswered questions kind of toggling around my brain. Uh, the first step of teaching is planning. And under the current circumstances, teachers' planning will take at least two times longer than before. We'll need to plan for both in-class students as well as distance learning opportunities. We'll be revising curriculum, which often requires the shared use of materials, small groups or paired work experiences, which are now not possible. We'll also be planning to fill gaps in learning from the shutdowns and, and, uh, be building background knowledge which students have missed. So given that students will now eat meals in the classroom, I'm wondering how student, how teachers will be given planning time. This usually happens during specials classes, which I also didn't, uh, see a plan for outlined today. Um, I personally don't want to see our specials, specials teachers, many of who are of advanced ages, exposed to hundreds of students each day. And I feel there needs to be a better plan. Uh, the second step of teaching happens through building relationships. I'm sure we all recognize that the very nature of instruction when we return will be different. Activities which used to be collaborative happening between, happening between pairs or groups. or groups of students, will now occur at desks. Young students who used to be given the opportunity to rotate around the room to stations or interactive activities will now be required to stay in small spaces for multiple hours a day, going against developmentally appropriate practices for their age ranges. So teachers of young students who used to navigate management issues with movement, or smiles, or facial expressions, and even used to model the mouth formation distinguishing the sounds between different letters, will now have their faces covered and masked, which is understandable and crucial and necessary. But without being able to implement best practices, we are going back, but at what cost? Will the quality of education that we are able to provide and the increasingly limited hours, which are cut back by all the extra indispensable health procedures proposed today, cut back more by staggered schedules and then more by periodic shutdowns, be worse the risks to our children, families, and communities?
Excuse me, excuse me. You've exhausted your two minutes. If you could finish your thought, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I know that children thrive on routines and predictability. So I'm just wondering if opening and closing and being home one day and then at school the next will really be in their best interest. I want to be at work, but more importantly, I want to be able to do this work for years to come. There's a lot of unanswered questions. Who stops the quarantine room? Will multiple students be quarantined together? How do we do social distancing at recess?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Drew Warndorf. Go ahead, Drew.
Hi, good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. I just have a question. I work at Hartwell Free and our school compared to some of the others, but our class sizes are exponentially larger than most as we have very high numbers in enrollment. That being said, we have, some of the teachers have tried to follow your guidelines with the alphabetical split. Last year, we saw class sizes upwards of 37 students. And any way you slice it, that's around 20 students per classroom. Our classrooms are not large. They're rather small. Some teachers actually teach in a basement where there aren't any windows. And so we're very concerned about giving students that six feet of distance. If that's not possible, what are the plans for the students once you've reached that maximum capacity? And then, how are we going to handle new admins? We had students coming and being enrolled into our classrooms, some upwards of maybe once a month. And so are we capping that enrollment? I know we can't do that as a neighborhood school, but will those kids be encouraged to go somewhere where the enrollment is less? I also heard Mr. McDowell mention leave, but I didn't hear anything about the quarantine time. So was that going to be taken out of the teachers' banked days? That was still not clear to me. Additionally, the last piece, the previous speaker, Sean, had mentioned just all of the different things that are going to have to go into consideration in the classroom and how teachers are being forced to kind of move away from best practices. So that being said, some of it is state regulated, but I mean, been discussed regarding teacher evaluations. I know the pressure of being evaluated in this sort of militaristic teaching style where kids are lined up. I'm a science teacher. We do inquiry-based instruction, you know, where kids are working collaboratively, and I know that's not going to be possible. So has there been any thought to what that process is going to be looking like for teachers? I know you also, one last thing, mentioned extracurriculars. As a person who runs an extracurricular, a theater program specifically at our school, I would just encourage you that if you're going to allow sports, that you think about what that's going to look like for extracurriculars.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your two minutes are up. Please finish your sentence.
Thanks. I just hope that the extracurriculars are considered equitably and not a heavy thought put onto the sports. Thank you so much for your time.
Is Barrett Smith? Go ahead, Barrett.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a teacher, I want to start by noting that I would normally prefer in-person instruction, however, we find ourselves in exceptional times. I ask the board to consider a few necessary guiding questions for in-person instruction this fall. How many sick students and staff are acceptable? How many hospitalizations are acceptable? How many dead students and staff are acceptable? What is our threshold of acceptable illness and death? I worry that the board's current discussions seem divorced from our reality. Hamilton County is currently experiencing a surge and out-of-control community spread. Our plans cannot pretend that the pandemic is external outside of our district. If we resume in-person instruction, there will be COVID-positive students and staff, asymptomatic super-spreaders in our buildings from day one. Even with precautions, in-person schooling will more rapidly spread the virus through our schools and wider community. In recent weeks, we've seen outbreaks in schools internationally and summer camps across the southern United States. In-person instruction is ordinarily preferable, but now it condones and ensures more illness and death. We need to address this reality. We need to set aside any delusions that we can keep the virus out, and we need decisive action that centers the health and lives of our community. An online semester is imperfect, but it is preferable to a virus with unknown long-term health effects and the death of students, colleagues, and community members. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Giorgiulis. Go ahead, Brian.
Hold on. Okay, splendid. Thank you all. I agree with the last speaker 100%. I think that the board needs very seriously to consider that there are logistical challenges. There are staff challenges. There are enforcement challenges, which CPS is not presently equipped to address satisfactorily by bringing students back into their buildings, by bringing teachers back into their buildings. I have a great many dear friends who are teachers, and a great many dear friends whose children are students in CPS. The long and short of it is that if you're bringing folks back to learn in person this semester, folks will die. People's lives are in your hands right now. As much as you have clearly done your due diligence and put together a lovely presentation to suggest that maybe it is plausible, or realistic, or responsible to return in person, it simply isn't. And it is very much your moral duty not to bring folks back to school who simply can't risk it. Thanks very much.
Our next speaker is Erica with LM as a last name. Go ahead, Erica.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. First off, I just wanted to say, as somebody with sensory issues, it'd be really great if people could turn off their mics or if we could work on the feedback. It's pretty distracting. I wanted to start out by just saying thank you to all of you. I thought you did a wonderful job of your presentation. It was very detailed, and there were a lot of moments where I was very pleasantly surprised. So I wanted to acknowledge that before I give you any kind of sort of negative feedback. So I just wanted to, first of all, introduce myself. My name's Erica McCain. I'm a local disability attorney. And until COVID, I was the Director of Student Success at TriHealth Good Samaritan College of Nursing and Health Science. Most importantly, though, I'm a mother of a CPS student who just graduated from Killmore and wanted to go to Walnut this year. I'm also a Walnut Hills High School graduate, very proudly, by the way. I wanted to, first of all, talk, I have about three main points I wanted to get to. I wanted to second Sarah Mahoney's statement. There were other statements as well that were made today that I thought were excellent. I hope that you listen to them. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get down all of their names, but the last two speakers in particular, I found to be very compelling. Sarah Mahoney talked about delaying school and the start date. If you go back at all, I think it's critical that you do delay. It does not sound to me that you're incredibly prepared for the epidemic. I know a lot of work has been done, but it's certainly new times that we're in. And so it's not a criticism necessarily of the school board or the superintendent that you're not prepared. It's just reality. I don't think that we are prepared to start back quite yet. If you do, and I think that there was a school board member who said he's leaning towards that. If you do decide to reverse, and I think that you should, the teachers that I'm speaking to are staying the same. They do not want to go back to the school. Notably, I think there were other educators here. There was maybe one that said she did. I'm not sure, you know, what she's listening to. Perhaps she's listening to our president. But that's not science or fact-based evidence. I don't think that we should go back. And a lot of your teachers don't think you should go back, at least this semester. So I want to just emphasize that. If you don't go back, or actually even if you do, since you're talking about a hybrid model, I want you to further explain what exactly you've done to prepare your teachers for online education. This is not something that-
Yes, ma'am. Your two minutes are up. Can you please finish your thought?
I will. So it's not something you can do overnight. And if the funding simply is not there for you to do in-person training to prepare these people to be online educators, I want you to go to our local corporations like TriHealth, Centos, Kroger, Macy's, Fifth Third, et cetera. And I want you to talk to them about helping to fund this. It's not that hard. Get the funding and set up-
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is somebody who named themselves Cincinnati Public School. Are you there? Okay, our last speaker is Ms. Sellers. Go ahead, Julie.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say that I am very, I'm not surprised at all by the number of speakers that we've had on the call today. They can't hear me? Hold on. No, she said she can. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, they can hear me. I just want to say that I am not surprised by the number of speakers who were on the call today. I have probably received 500, 600, 700 calls directly, all pretty much the same as the information you have been receiving. The people who were speaking were pretty much in alignment with the information that we received on our surveys. But I do appreciate all the details of the plan and the focus on safety. But there are still too many unanswered questions that I'm sure that will be able to be worked out. But as you can probably recognize, and what I think is one of the most critical issues coming out of this is that there is a broken level of trust by employees across the district. I think that the district needs to set up a hotline if there are not procedures that are not in place. It must be part of where if a teacher runs out of supplies or masks or sanitizing equipment, that they can call a number and it will be delivered right to their door immediately. There should not be a delay. I do think that it's awesome that the district is trying to set up childcare for staff. I know this is something that is important, and I've heard this concern by many. I've also heard that it's a concern for many families, which I think it's great that we will be working with families with public partnerships to help to families to figure that out. But I do want to know what will be the cause for us to close? That has not really been addressed. I do know that the state of Ohio has this COVID risk guidelines. And right now, we are currently in Level 3. But actually, after a couple of days, we have triggered six, we have triggered at this point six of the indicators, which means we are at Level 4, but it just has not been enough days that the number of indicators have been triggered. Many of our surrounding counties, such as Warren County, and I know Anderson, those school districts have said, you know, they're coming back five days, no exceptions. But if they get to Level 4, that means that the school is automatically shut down. At Level 4, it says that stay at home, necessary travel only because there's a severe exposure and spread, and only leave home for supplies and services, and follow all current health orders. And so I think that our Hamilton County health commissioners will probably, at Level 4, put in more triggers and more restrictions. I think it's important that we do have a plan, but it must be fluid. It must be at the level that all people have trust that they can go to work and they don't feel like they have to go to work and risk their lives. There was talk about a new employee handbook and how it has been rewritten. We have not seen that. We would like to know, when will this be released? How will teachers know what this handbook is? If it's just posted online, will people even know that it's out there? Because every employee of the district is not here. So I think that it's important that the district uses the ratings and that they are fluid based on each county's triggered indicators. I am hearing the anxiety of teachers. I'm hearing anxiety from principals and families. And so I think that it's essential that the district uses guidelines that are going to make decisions to open or close public. What does that look like? And at what level will we expect schools to not open? If we were at Level 1, I think people would have a whole different level of anxiety about returning to school. But we are officially in Level 4. We have met six of the indicators in Hamilton County. How many indicators do we have to meet before schools are closed? Other surrounding counties, they're looking at this guideline. And if we were in a Level 1, I would say all teachers would be happy to go back to school. All families would be happy to send their children back. But I think that we need guidelines. We also need guidelines on what are the guidelines that they have? Will be clear guidelines that are based on the federal FMLA guidelines for teachers to be able to take, use paid sick leave and leave if they are at risk for themselves or their families? And that needs to be clear guidelines that every employee is aware of, and it should not be something that is being done behind closed doors or being hidden from employees because they are federal guidelines. And so I just want to say, a lot of work has been done. I think there's some great guidelines that have been put in place. But I also think that we also must look at what are the risk levels for people, for students and teachers to return. And thank you for your time. Carolyn, I do have to say to you and to all of the members of the board, I hope that you have been listening to concerns and anxieties, but I appreciate your openness to have these public forums and discussions so that teachers can actually speak what is on their minds. I think that many times the district, when I come by myself, it's not really addressed. These are issues that could have been cleared up long before now. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Treasure Wagner, I'm assuming that Ms. Sellers is the last speaker?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. And we do appreciate the speakers who have come to us over these past several weeks, actually. So we do hear you, and we will, we are doing our best. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to our Board Matters topic. And I'm going to ask Ms. Board Member Bates to introduce it and to start the conversation.
Yes, I put this on the agenda because the, I guess, the kind of our self-imposed deadline by the virtue of the meetings or the limited number of meetings we have coming up need to be addressed. Or not that, but this issue needs to be addressed because of that. And that's whether- And that's whether or not we are going to move forward with our tax levy renewal and put that on the ballot, uh, for a vote in November. So I want the, uh, the board to know that there is some information that will be forthcoming regarding polling that will help you in making your decision. But also, we really have to come up with a conclusion at our next board meeting, uh, because the deadline for submission to the Board of Elections is coming up. And right now, it's all systems go. I'm not sure if that's where the board is. I'm not even sure if you have the information to make that decision right now. But just kind of as a reminder that we really need to focus on this with the forthcoming information and, uh, make a decision at our next board meeting.
Okay. Uh, open it up for discussion or, and/or questions, uh, Mr. Messer?
You know, I think, um, like a lot of us, I absolutely had, um, some skepticism, frankly, of what, what the polling would look like. And I think the preliminary results, um, have shown that our community, once again, and continues to support our, our public schools. So once that official report can be, uh, shared, I do think that it, it will be a positive story. And, uh, I'm with Ms. Bates. I think we need to make that decision quickly because, you know, then you have to put the whole campaign together up into it, including, um, getting the language submitted for the ballot. But I, I am thrilled, frankly, uh, just at the preliminary results, um, that you'll be seeing. And, um, you know, again, speaks to the support we have in our community.
Great. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, um, yeah, the time is near and here. Um, I, I would suggest we might want to have a discussion about the possibility of the language of the ballot. I think Mr. Messer just mentioned that. It's my understanding that, um, while it is a CPS operations, uh, um, request for renewal, it is perhaps, it might be important that we include the reference that was there perhaps last time. Not sure, was not there last time? Maybe we need it more this time, um, regarding, uh, preschool promise, uh, in order to help educate the voters. I just think we should at least contemplate that. But we'd have to be doing that right away, or is it still, is there still time to do it? And then also regarding preschool issue, I know that we have to, I, I would assume, appoint two of our seats. Uh, and I think the two current people holding those seats, uh, Dr. Owens and Mrs. Alsop are interested in continuing to serve. I think it would be great for us to get that done and, and so appreciate what they've been, been doing for us and the children. Um, so those would just be what I'd contribute.
Yes. Okay, other questions or comments about it?
I, I, I agree. I think, uh, just as a preliminary step, it was good for us to raise this concern today, just kind of to lay out that, the framework and recognize what we need to do. So what I'm hearing is the polling information, uh, we need to look at, uh, then we need to consider and discuss the language of the ballot suggesting to include more specific language about it being the preschool promise. And then separate from that, but related to preschool promise, we need to, um, consider reappointment of our two seats.
Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Messer?
Yeah. You know, if we're going to, uh, talk about more of the holistic thing, which I think is the right thing to do in the context of this, um, I also think there is an opportunity to look at our, um, agreement on preschool promise. You know, we're, and I think the-
The MOU?
Yeah. Um, and maybe we appoint somebody and they appoint somebody. But I think since we are, you know, there's, obviously you learn a lot more after you do, you think you know. And then I just think it would be good to look through that. Um, I think over the past few years, we've talked about like communication seems cockeyed and crooked and who is this person supposed to talk to? And who, how does this operate? So, you know, I think as we are kind of planning for that, it might be helpful and prudent, um, to at least do a, just a annual review or, you know, in, in preparation for the next iteration of, uh, our working relationship.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Right. Okay, well, we'll, we'll have to get this wheel rolling fast and we'll do that. Anything else, Ms. Bates, related to that? Okay. All right, so if we can move on to our resolution, Mr. Marowski, please present the following resolution.
Um, this is the resolution, uh, to which Dan alluded, suspending, um, these four policies, um, for the current school year, or at least until we're able to go back, as we know, it's a fluid situation. But for the time being, in Policy Committee, we agreed that suspending these policies, the resolution was a good idea. And I'll note that doing it via resolution also makes it very simple to bring them back. So we're not suggesting new policies or amending policies because then that would be kind of a laborious process. So the, the spirit of suspension through resolution is just that, to build in that flexibility to bring them back if it, a date when we can. So I present the resolution for the suspension of these four policies as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? That was a great Policy Committee meeting the other day.
I thought so too.
Listening in. It went very well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy? Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
All righty, Superintendent, do you have a report?
Oh, we have another resolution.
I'm sorry?
Appropriations.
Appropriations resolution?
We do. Why I don't have it in my script, I don't know, but we do have another. Um, please, Ms., Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Um, uh, this is a resolution, uh, for fiscal year 2021, amending appropriations resolution. And whereas FY 2021 temporary appropriations resolution was adopted by the board on the 22nd of 20, whereas the amounts appropriated at those times were based on the then-current estimate of revenues and expenditures for the funds then established. And whereas an updated analysis of revenue and expenditures analysis has been conducted on all district funds, which found that appropriations adjustments were needed. And whereas the adjustments are required to, uh, conform to the relevant sections of the Ohio Revised Code governing appropriations and expenditures and funds. And whereas it is necessary to amend appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, to reflect the current estimate of revenues and expenditures for the following funds, not in excess of the most recent amended certificate of estimated resources, uh, be it further, uh, be it resolved by the Board of Education in Cincinnati District, uh, in Hamilton County, that to provide for the current and anticipated expenditures of the following funds during fiscal year ending in '21, appropriations are hereby amended and appropriated. And I'm, uh, forward and hope for a second. And when we get that second, it'd be great for our treasurer to, uh, further explain this. There's been a lot of community discussion about the budget and whatever and all these other sorts of things. So I think this will be helpful in clearing up some of the confusion that's out there.
Yes. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And Treasurer Wagner will let you.
Yeah, so, um, if you recall, at my request, the board adopted a 90-day appropriation measure, uh, resolution, which, um, by state law, I cannot spend any money without approval from the board through an appropriation resolution. Because we were in the midst of designing what our new normal would look like, um, is why I asked the board for a temporary appropriation, so we could have time to redesign the budget to support the new model, um, and then ask for board approval in September. Um, we inadvertently did the, um, 90-day appropriation for all the pass-through dollars to the non-public schools. Um, it was unintentional, and my apologies go out to the archdiocese. Um, so this is a correction to that mistake, that we, we don't have any decision-making other than compliance for the non-publics to spend their money. It's simply a pass-through. So this is correcting and appropriating their year-long estimate of resources.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? All right, Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're ready now. Superintendent's report?
Yes, and the team is pulling up a PowerPoint presentation. So the treasurer and I will be co-presenting during this time. If you all wouldn't mind going to the second slide. So as has been stated since the pandemic started, we have had two major areas in which we want to focus. Obviously, health and safety and then academics. Originally, when I came to the board with a set of ideas to consider, remote learning was one of the options, five days a week, four days a week, a blended option, which is the option that was adopted, as well as a hybrid model, meaning elementary kids in session, um, spread across the district to get six feet of social distancing, and high school students remote or with a few days of instruction. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of all the different options and the considerations that were put on the table. We are in the process and will continue to review and adjust our protocols in collaboration with all of our partners, as well as Children's Hospital, who has been working with us diligently on our procedures and protocols related to the health and safety of our young people, as well as the adults who serve them in our buildings. We will be having, we'll be working to have a dashboard in place to be able to measure the impact on a daily basis as to the number of cases confirmed and cases in which people are sick and have symptoms. As we review all of this work, it will be important for us to remain agile in the decision-making process, as the board has been agile in considering all the different options that I just restated a couple moments ago. So as we look at our, our work for the upcoming school year, we want to be agile in thinking about the possibility, if appropriate and where appropriate, to increase our in-person days or to be able to decrease our in-person days based upon the data that we will have in our district, as well as within the county and within the city of Cincinnati. So we will be in contact with the Cincinnati Health Department. We will use our COVID dashboard. We will monitor the absences of both our students and adults who serve them, as well as our enrollment, and look at information around Hamilton County in terms of those districts, um, their COVID-19 confirmed cases as well, in addition to looking at orders that come out from the governor's office. We are committed to working with all of our unions in this process. I can understand the, um, reservation and anxiety that many of our staff members may have, and acknowledge the fact that people who are scared don't, um, provide the best service. And so again, we will work with our, um, unions very closely. I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, President Julie Sellers last week twice, and she is setting up weekly meetings with our team regarding all of the safety measures and protocols to put in place. I will go on record and say, this will not be easy for anyone. It's a very challenging time, um, but I'm listening and hearing your concerns and have them all documented, and will work with my team in terms of ways to make sure that at the school level, the procedures and processes are in place to help keep everyone safe if and when we return. Next slide, please. In terms of being able to track our data, we will look at county data, city data, and we'll also look at the data as represented by other districts in terms of confirmed cases for students as well as for staff. This, um, shows you Hamilton County is currently at a level three, as indicated at the beginning of our presentation, and so we are currently in the red area. We are looking at this. We are analyzing this, and we're using this information to inform our work and our decisions. As we move forward, it would be extremely important, though, for our families to help us. So families, we need you. We need you to help make sure that the kids, when they come to school, that they wear a mask, that, um, if a mask isn't available at home, to know that we'll provide masks for them, to do the temperature checks before coming to school, to make sure to instill hand washing is so important, not only in our schools, but also at home. We need our guardians to take temperatures, do the monitor checks in terms of making sure the kids are not sick before coming to school, and then, most importantly, to be able to keep kids home if they are sick. Next slide, please. As we think about the work ahead and moving forward, we do believe that there is the opportunity to include an increase of days if we're able to maintain a very low number of spread or be able to make sure that it is on the decline. And so we are suggesting that there's the opportunity to be able to bring our pre-K students in at five days a week with six feet of social distancing, and consider as well, specialized classrooms and our SLIF classrooms as appropriate. Again, we would not make this recommendation or suggestion without putting a lot of precautionary measures in place for the safety of our kids. Although safety and health is the most important thing, we also have to remember and recognize that we're an institution for learning, that our core business is teaching our young people so that they can excel and be able to have a very bright future. And so we're constantly thinking about the education of our young people as we do this work. We believe that, that there may be the opportunity to increase the number of days with a lot of review and analysis of the data over a period of time that we will carefully analyze over the course of this coming school year with our staff members and our board and our community. Earlier, there was made a reference to me saying that we'll have extra staff in place. And the reason that we will have extra staff in place is that you may have noticed that I have not made any recommendation to rip hundreds of staff members. There will be a recommendation that will be coming forward later on this week, um, and, but I believe the number is under 150. So we have made considerable progress since the last time that we met, which was on June the 29th. We were looking at hundreds of people being ripped from the district. And so we are looking at being able to maintain our, uh, staff as long as possible, to be able to provide services for our kids through all the precautionary measures that we're going to put in place within our schools. So I would thank the board for this consideration, to consider a very, um, flexible and agile approach to the work in terms of increasing number of days where and if appropriate, and decreasing number of days in and where appropriate, and possibly going to remote if that's appropriate as well. Next, I'll turn it over to our treasurer, Jennifer Wagner, to talk about the budget status.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. So, uh, at this point, I just wanted to remind everybody the economic, financial challenges this district has in switching from day-to-day, five days, into, um, our new remote model, or our new, sorry, excuse me, our new normal model. Um, and I just wanted to remind you that in fiscal year 19, which is the school year before the one we just ended, we lost $5 million in state revenues because we were growing faster than the formula would allow, allow us to grow. That $5 million loss carried over into the new year, so it really cumulatively was a $10 million hit for us. The last year, in addition to the $10 million, they froze our formula because they couldn't agree to a state funding formula. They, they froze us to the prior year's revenue, despite us increasing our enrollment by 553 students. Um, they did give us an additional $1 million to help support that, uh, growth in enrollment. But, um, when COVID hit us and the state started seeing economic downtrends in their data, they announced a 315, 350 million dollar cut to K-12 education. Since the public schools portion was 8.7 million, and they reduced that in the last three payments of the year. So immediately, we lost 8.7 million. That averaged to be about 192 students, $192 per student, um, and $88 for a charter school student, um, since, uh, we do pass-through funding for charter school. So as we monitored what's happening in the state of Ohio, we saw, uh, an unprecedented unemployment rate of 14% um, that we hadn't seen in since the 40s. Income tax withholdings were down in the state of Ohio. Non-sales auto tax were down, which indicates people's discretionary funding, our spending was down, although in May, it started to uptick a little bit. So we were starting to see a recovery, very small. And then Dusty Rhodes, Hamilton County Auto, announced a decline in property tax collections. And then he delayed property tax bills to be due in July. All around us, we were seeing announcements of layoffs and furloughs. And while last year, we were able to hold on to all of our employees throughout to finish the school year, we started to see guidance from the Ohio Budget Management Office to reserve 20% of our general fund budget, which would equal $125 million to this district, and it would be absolutely devastating to us if we were to do that. Then they announced the CARES Act funding, which is federal funding that to help support the additional costs that we would incur because of COVID-19. The original, and they allocated it based on our Title I federal funding allocations. So we were, the district was allocated $23 million. And initially, we thought that would mean 18 million to the district and the non-public schools getting the rest. But they lowered ours and increased the non-publics. So CPS is getting 16 and a half million dollars. There is rumors of HERO Act funding and Second CARES Act funding, but we've not seen anything in writing or sustainable for us to plan on. So in this slide, I won't read it to you. I just wanted to remind everybody all the changes that are surrounding us by industry. Universities are being hit. People are being laid off. My alma mater took a 20% pay cut, and so that was surprising to me. But the hospitals were taking pay cuts. The doctors and the nurses are taking pay cuts, and businesses are starting to close. And so Washington Post quote on the next slide shows that more than 100,000 small businesses will have closed forever as a result of this COVID. And that's going to be a long time recovering economically. Go ahead. So I also wanted to remind us about the May forecast. So if you recall, we're required to file two forecasts a year, once in November and once in May, and it's to help the state monitor our solvency and be transparent with our finances. There's two items up there that I want to call attention to. So fiscal year '22, we will, we're forecasted to end the year with a very small positive cash flow. Our goal is to always have at least two years of positive cash. That $11 million at the end of fiscal year '22 will not cover 60 days of our payroll. So we need to make, we're, be very frugal on how we spend our money. But in holding that line means that we can only spend this coming school year $625 million. Anything above that or any reduction in revenue is going to hurt, is going to hurt us next year and force us to get back to the public before we desire to. So where do we stand today on the budget? So if you recall, the last year's budget, fiscal year '20, the general fund-approved budget was $657 million. The forecast says we can always spend $625 million. So already, we were looking at reducing our spending from the current year. I can't read that on the screen. So in the model that was adopted by the Board, the additional cost of that model would bring $29 million extra of spending to the district. So if you take the $657, add $29 million to it, we were looking at an estimated cost of $685, 6 million. So that produced a $61 million gap compared to the $625 million target. Then we started adding the CARES Act funding that would be applicable to that possibly normal. And you might ask, why didn't the entire amount go to there? It's because we started spending it to help us with the closure in March, April, May, and summer learning. So 8 million, 8.7 million dollars is applied to that to reduce that gap. And then we were able to rearrange some of our student wellness funds to help support this new normal. That closed the gap to 47.7 million. So the first thing the performance leadership team did was that we'd started looking at all 1,209 vendor contracts, and we looked at each individual contract to determine whether it was, we could still move forward with that or did it present a safety issue for our students? Was it an essential service that needed to be had that would support the learning process? Was it giving us the return on investment we anticipated it to? Or was it something we could just delay for a year and then revisit it? And so we were able to cut out $8 million of our last year's spending to help reduce that gap. We then looked at the money that we spent on the smaller facility projects that are within the schools. And we're not talking about the lighthouse and Mozart-type things, but in the individual school, having a request to have a project done. We just said, we're going to delay those for a year. That would save us 1.5 million. And then unfortunately, we had to start looking at staff. And so we were able to reduce that 720 reduction in body, in positions, budgeted positions. Let me clarify the difference between a budget reduction and a RIF, or what's called a reduction in force. A budget reduction is just eliminating a position, but that individual that's filling that position doesn't necessarily lose their job. They can fill another vacancy or maybe get repurposed into another role. And so we were able to do that to reduce the amount of employees that were impacted negatively. So that, the 162 positions that we reduced would save us 13.4 million. We also reduced the elementary portion of Schedule E, which is the, how we pay for extracurriculars, athletics, and clubs. We thought, because of the change in closures and the just, the change in operations, we wouldn't be spending as much as we did last year. We were also able to cut another 1.4 million out of our non-personal spending that included like reducing office supplies and cutting out travel and reduction of trash collection. And a couple other things that are not coming to mind at the moment. And then we did an estimate on if we extended the winter session so that students would be remote over the winter break to allow for continued learning, but April cleaning and a reset for the new year. And so that would able to save us $5 million with the reduction in transportation that would not happen during those 15 days, electricity, and then some civil service employees who would not be working when the students aren't in school. So all those cuts got us down to a $17 million gap in the budget. So we went back to the drawing board and said, well, if we can, if things started to turn positively and we could go from the model, the 2-3 version model, to a four-day model for the last 36 weeks of the school year, we would be able to send, save another $13 million in civil service salaries. So many of the people that were originally going to be reduced in the first model, we're able, we're going to convert them to a four-day pay period, four-day pay so that they could maintain a full-time job and maintain their benefits. That $13 million is, also includes a reduction in transportation and those associated costs. That got us down to a $4 million gap. And we went back to the table again. We went a little bit deeper with central office and a couple other items in the schools, and we were able to reduce 32 more positions and another 510,000 in non-personnel to get the gap down to 3.2 million. Oh, sorry, that was 3.2 million in cuts, so that got the gap down to $800,000. And so we're pretty close. We'll keep working to close that gap because we cannot operate in a deficit situation. But I just want to caution us that a slippage in the timeframe, so if things start going uglier and we're not able to convert from a 2- to 3 model to a four-day-a-week model, that will cost us $222,000 a week, every week that slips. And so that's, we'll have to go deeper into other budget items in order to close that gap. If that makes sense? I'll pause there for questions or comments.
Can I just add one point of clarification? Because in my presentation, I said under 150 people. So there's a difference between people and positions. So you say, well, that doesn't make sense because the Treasurer just said 161 and then an additional 32. So 161, adding the 32, many of those were vacancies, and so that doesn't equate to people losing their jobs. I just want to make that clarification for the Board and for the public.
Okay, questions and/or comments, Mr. Morosky?
I would just like to, just a brief comment. Thank the administration for the hours and hours they spent together coming up with this. This plan that puts in flexibility based on the science and the yellow to the purple. I think it's a good plan for a whole host of reasons. I also, and you know, I think it's important that we give you, Superintendent Mitchell, the ability to steer the ship. We voted, we've said, here's where we're going to be. This is evolving, and I know, at least I, I would never assume to speak for anyone else here, but I feel I can get close to doing that with this statement. We trust you to lead this. So I think this is great, and I also think it's a good moment of solidarity for us seven. Again, not to talk out of turn, but going forward through this pretty uncertain, challenging time. And lastly, I'll just say I'm extremely thrilled to see the numbers of staff positions be so dramatically reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and I'm also very appreciative of the work you're doing with our partners for childcare because based on this recommendation, our families are going to need flexibility in childcare. So they can't be signing contracts and then, you know, having us change our course either to increase or decrease. So I'm sure that'll be a consideration with our partners, but that'll be a big help for our families as well when they, you know, consider the childcare options that hopefully our partners are going to be able to satisfy for them.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, and then we'll get this done. Okay, we'll get you, Mr. Lindy. Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, I would, I second what both have said already. And I think the key is the word that the Superintendent used earlier in the presentation, which was to remain agile. And that flexibility, that agility, if you will, can, is going to be used extensively because there will be times that certain buildings or even the district will close. We have to have the right things in place. There's also the possibility, as you mentioned with preschool and some specialized classes, that we cannot necessarily just have one size fit all, that that flexibility and that agility can meet the needs of more and more students. If it's 20 more, 200 more, 1,000 more, I think that's great. And if we can, you keep reviewing and monitoring, and if there's a way we can move to more in person, but I think also maintain the need for the digital and remote learning at the same time. I think we need to be ready to be agile in a positive way, as well as agile in a negative way, and keep the children at the heart of it and our families because that's actually what's important, especially after listening today. It is about the children.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, just to agree with previous Board members, I want to thank you guys for being as transparent. Budget is the key element after the children in this situation. And I commend you, Treasurer Wagner, for going down the steps as to how you got to the $800 million, $800,000, $800,000? $800,000 from the $625 million. Well, it was more than that, actually, when you added all the other numbers. But I also agree with Board Member Bates with the agility and how you reiterated, Superintendent, that we are interdependent on each other in this very trying effort from teachers to parents to the workbook that Assistant Superintendent Bunty spoke of for the children, I mean owning part of this. We are all, as a community, going to have to work together to make the best of what this unprecedented situation calls for. So thank you for the report and thank you for your comments.
Mr. Messer, followed by Mr. Lindy?
Yes, I'll state the obvious. We're on a Corona coaster ride that none of us asked to be on. And you know, what I will say is my place of employment has had these exact conversations. And when our leadership presented our go-back-to-work plans, there were very many people, like we had today, who said, for these reasons, I'm at risk. Childcare is an, you know, an obstacle. So we are dealing with things that employers are everywhere, and we're going to have to keep our eyes peeled for best practices, as we do. And I think, you know, just, there's a lot of our employees spoke today, which I love. And I think, you know, employee engagement is critical. There's a dance here, though, because a plan had to be kind of done, presented to the Board for feedback, and then, you know, trying to figure out how you triangulate all of that. I don't think there was ever an intent to exclude anyone. But at the same time, going forward, you know, somebody said it best. Some of the most important people in executing this plan is going to be those teachers, those parent professionals that do so well with our children and will add this to what they do. So we are going to depend on them, as well as all of our family members, et cetera. And I love this agility that's called out here because I am not convinced, if people don't change their ways, that this won't be a purple county, and we will be remote. And I think I wish we'd had this part of the conversation before the public comment didn't fall, that wasn't anybody's fault, it just, the way, kind of the order. But I think this agility, people need to know, if the data comes in and we are at that purple level, there'll be an alternative plan. And if it goes to green, I think we all have to have that, God willing, then we'll adjust the other way. But I just, I want to make sure the public hears that there's nobody on this Board that wants anything but the utmost safety of our students and our staff, period. And that's for all of our staff and any partners, et cetera. So what this plan does is say, you got to have something that says you go forward, and then you've got to lay out, when and how does that adjust? And I think that's the beauty of the second part of the presentation. Hopefully, our public, our employees, our families heard that. A decision tomorrow might be very different. We've changed three times in my place of employment in the past 30 days. I still don't think our go-back-live date's going to stick. Same thing here. I think it's just going to be a moving Corona coaster that we're on, and the best we can do is work together to achieve the best outcome. So thank you to the administration. And I will underscore also the beauty of this plan and the lack of the massive RIFs that we potentially heard about. Never a good idea during a pandemic, never a good idea when people need healthcare, et cetera. And I think that's a really good outcome here, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy, followed by Ms. Bates?
Thanks, President Jennifer. The comments I wanted to make, I think, addresses what feels like a pretty, like increasingly remote concern, which is the idea of going, like if we're back two to three days a week and the data look good, bringing kids back more often. I do want to talk about that for just a second, though I think that just seeing the increasing levels of cases and our risk rating as a county, you know, we may not be there. But if, if we are in a world where we're back two or three days a week and we're looking at data and we're interested in bringing kids back more often, one request I have is that we look not just at what's happening within CPS, excuse me, but we find at least one, preferably more than one district that has been back with three feet or less of social distancing and compare what we're seeing within CPS to what we're seeing within that other district. I'm slightly concerned about a situation where things look good or at least better within CPS, but that's because of all the precautions we're taking. And before we relax any of those, I would love to see information from another district that has had those relaxed already in order to feel confident that we could do so safely. And I think I just echo briefly how grateful I am for the, I think, care and thought that everyone is putting into this very difficult issue. Thank you.
Yes, my question is procedural. Will these new recommendations be brought forward at the next Board meeting so that we will allow the Superintendent flexibility rather than adhering to the prior resolution as it was adopted?
I'm not sure if I understand what...
Right now, the resolution that passed at the last Board meeting doesn't permit...
Right now, the resolution that passed at the last board meeting doesn't permit the superintendent to do what she just described, the agility to increase, even preschool for that, for that matter, but to increase other, other classrooms and schools as, as we see, as.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As the administration sees as appropriate. So I, I would want to give the superintendent that flexibility, of course, with the advisement of the board, but to give her that flexibility so we're not always going back and having emergency meetings to allow the superintendent to do what she needs to do.
I think the way I'm understanding it, and board members, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we, she's described in her recommendations kind of where she is, so she's kind of laid that out for us. If we approve the report, I think we are sanctioning the recommendations, given what you said, and we're also saying that sort of our expectation is that we're also, we need to be involved, we need to get the data, and we need to know. But I think we are giving her our okay to move forward with what she presented today. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to see the report attached to the recommendations and be part of the record so we have a written record of, of the report of the superintendent.
Okay.
Right now, we, we don't, we don't vote on each separately. We, the superintendent gives a report and we vote on the recommendations. So perhaps we need to attach the report to the recommendations. So we're voting on, including the report as a, as a part of the record.
Okay. Ms. Bolton, you have a comment?
So can, can we do that? Can the superintendent amend her recommendations to include the report so that we will vote on, on both? Okay, that's.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I mean, my interest always is have as much in-person education as possible, but actually, Ms. Bates is right, the current plan does not even allow the superintendent necessarily to move less than two, three. I mean, so I think you're voting, the agility piece is there, up or down, and more likely it's going to be down in these early months or weeks or, God forbid, longer. So I think there is at least that flexibility with board oversight and governance to, but I, I think she needs the flexibility because let's face it, I'm not sure with everybody else that we're going to be able to even open. So, but the plan says we're opening, oh, maybe not. So, and, and she has to be empowered to help make that determination, I think.
Okay. So I think personally, I'm, I'm comfortable with the recommendations, but I also need to say that I thought that that's what we were saying, is that the word agility gives her the flexibility to do it. But I don't have a problem with the specifics of it, but I thought that's what we were saying.
Okay. Treasurer Wagner.
Just to be fully, fully transparent and with an abundance of caution, I feel compelled to say that if we are not allowed to open for an extended period of time, for an entire quarter or semester, they say you can't go back till January, we will not be able to afford an entire complement of staff that we have now because we, our revenues will start declining. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and understands that.
If I could just add to that, we left the staff in place to get us open safely with our kids, but we will not be able to sustain that for a long period of time without more kids actually being on site.
Any more questions or comments about that? Just, well, I didn't get to make a final comment, but I, I just want to say that I have, I really do appreciate all the work that the superintendent and Treasurer Wagner and the administration team has done, and all the folks at the district who kind of have helped support us through this, like our guy sitting right here, who have gotten to know us pretty well, right? I, I, you know, I'm speaking from emotion right now because I heard Mr. Morawski say earlier that he wasn't that optimistic about us opening, and neither was I, and I'm still not. And I need to say that, you know, we all, everybody here wants the best for kids. But just like we all saw over these past several weeks, we've listened to the people, our public, and they've expressed the diversity of ideas and opinions and thoughts and ideas. We've had that same thing here. And, but at some point, we have to move on and we have to move forward. It may not be the best decision. It may not be the most optimal decision, I should say, but I think, I think what we've done is really said, or what we have been saying is that we have full confidence in our leadership to lead us through this. So, you know, I am in support of the superintendent's recommendations, and we'll note that when we go to the motion, but I also say that, and I'm saying this publicly, I have cried and cried, you know, I've been anxious, I'm not, you know, depressed because I don't want the burden of anybody's death on me. And so I'm going to have to temper myself around that because this is just a tough situation. But we got elected to make tough situations, and that's the thing that I think is holding me together. And, you know, I'm also affected personally through family and, and all of that. So thinking about all of that, but anyway, I'm, I'm going to be quiet, but I felt like I had to say that because I haven't felt like I've been myself. I really haven't, and I'm still not there, but I'm going to get there. So anyway, thank you, Superintendent and your team for all the work that you've done. Anymore? Anything else? Ms. Bolton?
Then is the decision to pass a revised recommendation because we're attaching the, the, the report?
Yes.
So, so that motion would be for the revised? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a revised recommendation?
So moved.
Of the superintendent?
Everybody wants to.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes.
Yeah, I, I also want to just kind of speak to what President Jones just talked about, and if, you know, you had, you know, I think it was just a great example of what joys come from teaming and collaboration and what challenges come with teaming and collaboration. And I just want to give thanks to President Jones because you have a board up here and one that's virtual. Everybody had different stakeholders and different neighbors and friends and, and perspectives, and it was a Herculean task to get something to the point of where we are today. And let's face it, even though we think that's where we are and where we should be, it probably won't stay that way, and there will always be some that aren't completely happy, some that are. And hopefully, going forward, we can now work together as a full community. But I just want to give kudos to our president for really being an expert cat herder and getting us to the point today and, and allowing us to now take this next step. So thank you to Carolyn.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the report of the treasurer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Wagner, please call roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Any assign, um, I'm sorry, inquiries and updates? Anybody have any inquiries or updates?
Moving on, any assignments? Of course. Come on, Ms. Bolton.
I, I've learned to raise my hand instead of say it. I'm sorry. I think it would be really great, the presentation or some, maybe not the full presentation, but I think it would be wonderful if it's possible to work it into the superintendent and treasurer's schedule. Remote opportunity to be able to meet with members of all the LSDMCs so that this information is coming from you two. I think that's so important as the governing body in each of those schools. I think that would be very useful, and I'm sure that our stellar Assistant Superintendent in charge of LSDMCs could work something out. But I think that would be greatly appreciated district-wide.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Messer?
Yes, this is probably already in the, in the plans, but, you know, employee engagement is a passion of mine, both in my place of employment and thinking about our district. And, you know, we've begun some things there. One thing for sure that I've seen in my workplace is just that ramping up of employee engagement once, you know, you kind of have the plans. And so, you know, with our, our frontline education workers, I mean, let's call them what they are, how can we engage them going forward? Also making sure that they have the support that's needed, you know, some of the, the personal, just emotional and, and stress-related, et cetera. So maybe there could be just an update on how we're going to lead our employees through this, how we'll engage with them to keep a pulse. I love the hotline idea that I think you've mentioned, Superintendent, just places where people could report if things aren't going to be followed, but just somebody to talk to. And what other resources do we have for our people during these challenging times? And, you know, I think that we will learn a lot from these frontline workers in the early days. So how can we collect that feedback, aggregate it, and then be, again, living into our plan of agility, flex and evolve just based on, you know, living into our plans, some things that you can only predict today, but when you actually do it, it may feel different. So I think that would be a good presentation, maybe potentially in the future meeting.
Thank you. Any other assignments? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
Yes, just to kind of reiterate what a board member, Messer, said, and that was in regards to more of the emotional support for our staff and our teachers, but the hearings from the public today sound like there was a lot of miscommunication that teachers were receiving, and I'm concerned that communication that's had maybe with Julie and you, or CFT President Sellers, how that's trickling down to buildings, from administrators to their staff, accuracy and even just, and from communication regularly. Because then I'm hearing also from teachers in buildings or administrators, our disseminating information is not correct. So it's the flow of it is not clear and not smooth. So if that could probably be checked on and reiterated and maybe processed, some information is getting out sooner that's miscommunicated, then you have to go back and do all this clearing up. So maybe if that can be checked on.
Okay. Any other assignments?
All righty. I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations, security matters, purchase of property, sale of property, and employment of a public employee or official. And yes, there you go. I need a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morawski? President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Having ignored the business here, well, we can't adjourn because we're recessing, right?
Everybody exit.
Take a break. I need one.